The Committee on Health, Land Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today is Thursday, November 18th, 2021, and the time is 5:08 PM. Notices for this oversight hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and main media broadcasting outlets on Wednesday, November 10th, 2021, and again on Monday, November 15th, 2021. The notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on the same days. The hearing is hosted by the Guam Legislature's MIS staff and my committee staff utilizing a virtual meeting format. I will introduce the issues for today, and then we will hear from the Ancestral Lands Commission Director and the Director of the Department of Land Management, and we will hear from ancestral landowners as well. And we will then allow senators to ask any questions of the panel. I want to thank my colleagues for attending. Senator Teletitukui Sizosmasi for being here today, Senator. I'd also like to thank the Department of Land Management Director, of course, Mr. Joseph Borja, and the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission Executive Director, Mr. John Birch, and commissioners. I'm very honored to have you commissioners here with us today. Chairman Ron Eclavea, Vice Chair Ron Leguatia, Commissioners Angela Kamacho, Maria Cruz. Thank you for attending today. Are there any other commissioners here that I've missed? Oh, Luisa Westling, thank you very much, Commissioner Westling. And I'd like to also recognize the presence of Senator Telina Nelson, Sizosmasi Senator. She is our Vice Chair on the Committee on Land. I'd also like to thank those landowners and claimants who have called my office, visited my office, and who are present with us today to provide comments or testimony. This hearing is to understand and receive updates from the Ancestral Lands Commission and those who have issues with the Ancestral Lands Commission or the Department of Land Management in regards to the return of excess land. It is not intended to resolve any specific claims by any particular landowners. We will have, this is a general hearing in that regard. Landowners and claimants are encouraged to address their specific cases with the Ancestral Lands Commission or the Department of Land Management. So, there's only one agenda item today, and that is an oversight hearing with the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission and the Guam Department of Land Management on the status of recent or pending transfers, deeds, leases or licenses between the government of Guam and the federal government or the Department of Defense. These issues, as you know, are not new. From many years, and I'm going to read from the background statement, the legislative background findings and intent from Public Law 25-45, which established the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. The legislature back then stated, "By passage of public law numbers 16-111, 17-52, 20-222, 22-145, 23-23, and 23-141, Ilha Zaturn Guahan recognized the need of private landowners to pursue appropriate remedies to redress the harm done to them and to Guam as a whole, when a substantial percentage of the land on Guam was taken by the naval government of Guam or the government of the United States through proceedings in eminent domain or under threat of eminent domain following World War II." Public Law numbers 16-111, 17-52, and 20-222 granted powers to the Guam Economic Development Authority to implement appropriate remedies. Public Law Number 22-145 granted additional powers to the Department of Land Management. Ilha Zaturn Guahan hereby finds and determines that the powers granted the authority and the Department of Land Management by those public laws have not been adequate to address the needs of landowners, and that additional powers therefore must now be granted to accomplish the legislative purposes set out in this section and as provided by those public laws. And so, this legislative background on Public Law 25-45, which established the Ancestral Lands Commission, also pointed out the policy with respect to original landowners that was still in place from the enactment of Guam Public Law Number 23-23. And the policy with respect to original landowners stated, "It is the policy of the government of Guam that land returned by the federal government of Guam," I'm sorry, "that land returned by the federal government to Guam be returned to the estates that held such property prior to the condemnation of said lands by the federal government." "Exclusions to this policy shall be lands clearly under existing public use. In such circumstances, the government of Guam shall make good faith efforts to derive a means of compensation for continued public use of such lands." And there are some other exceptions not applicable to us today. In 2011, prior to the signing of the Record of Decision for the military buildup on Guam, the Undersecretary of the Navy promised to pursue a "net negative strategy" for the United States Marine Corps relocation from Okinawa to Guam, which promised to result in a smaller DoD footprint on Guam after the buildup than DoD held in 2011, and to return underutilized land to the government of Guam. In June 2017, the Navy reported to Congress that it had returned three parcels totaling 608 acres since January 2011. And to return additional acres, and stated that plan in June 2017. All 125.6 acres listed in 2017 were listed as pending environmental studies. It also listed properties it intended to keep, and it would retain over 36,000 acres. In 2019, Congress mandated in the NDAA that the 125.6 acres promised in 2017 be returned, and that it continue to be included in annual reports, and mandated that reports be published on the website. NDAA 2019 also set up a formal process for governors to request the return of additional parcels. In 2019, Joint Legion Marianas' report indicated no additional properties had been transferred since 2011, and the same 125.6 acres listed for return in 2017 and in the NDAA 2019 were still listed by JRM as undergoing environmental studies. Pursuant to the NDAA mechanism Congress provided for governors to request additional land returns. In November of 2018, GETA made a report of potentially releasable federal land. In 2019, GETA issued another report with an identical list as the 2018 report. In August 2019, the governor sent a letter to the Secretary of the Navy, Richard Spencer, requesting to add 2,596 acres of terrestrial land and 17,000 acres of submerged land to the Navy's excess land inventory. On July 2, 2020, the Secretary of the Navy responded to the governor's request, rejecting most of the requests except for nine parcels totaling an estimated 93.66 acres of terrestrial land and 6,225 acres of submerged lands. Included in this was a 50-acre portion of a 310-acre lot we have now come to understand is the proposed site for the medical campus. In April of 2021, the Committee on Land held an oversight hearing with the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. At that hearing, the commission agreed with Speaker Trari to identify the owners of the lots listed for potential return and assist landowners in keeping informed of the status of their properties on these lists. On January 15th, 2021, the Secretary of the Navy wrote a letter to the governor confirming Lot A7A and B Anderson, which contains what is known as Eagles Field, will be added to the list of parcels eligible for return to Guam as requested by the governor in an August 2019 letter. According to the Secretary of the Navy's July 2020 letter, a 50-acre partial, a 50-acre portion of the site was added to the list of lands eligible for return. However, the 2021 letter confirmed that it will now be increased to 102.20 acres. The January 2021 letter also stated that the Navy would expedite the process and work with the governor's staff to identify an appropriate interim method to assist with planning and development. The January 2021 letter from the Secretary of the Navy was in response to a letter from the governor dated October 5th, 2020. And I want to note that we do not have a copy of the governor's October 5th, 2020 letter, and we have requested a copy of this letter from the governor's office, the Lieutenant Governor's Office, the Guam State Clearing House, the Department of Land Management. And we followed up the phone call to the governor's legal office today, but we do not have a copy. So if any of you who's listening today has a copy of this letter, I would appreciate a copy of the October 5th, 2020 letter from the governor to the Secretary of the Navy. The Secretary of the Navy in his response letter seems to indicate that there were additional requests for land made that we are not able to determine at this time. The government of Guam has issued a non-exclusive right of entry between April 9, 2021, and August 31, 2021, to Anderson Bearagada Annex Lot A7A and B, signed off by the Director of the Department of Land Management and the Real Estate Contracting Officer of the Naval Facilities Engineering Systems Command Marianas. The committee has requested both the Department of Land Management and the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission for the, as to the status of lands listed as "transfers in progress" by the Secretary of the Navy and the status of notification of landowners. Neither the Commission nor the Department of Land Management responded to a September 2, 2021 inquiry in that regards. And on October 20, 2021, two FOIAs were sent to the Department of Land Management. One FOIA requested documentation for Anderson Annex 1 and 2, A7A and A7B, and the other FOIA requested for documentation for the properties listed as "transfer in progress", according to the July 2020 letter from the Secretary of the Navy. Responses to these FOIAs were received on November 4th. A supplemental response was received November 5th, and additional files were delivered via thumb drive on November 15th. So, the main concerns for my committee, considering all of this, these information, was that the land designated for return might not go to the Ancestral Lands Commission, might not therefore be transferred to the original landowners as was intended by prior Guam law. And I wanted to know what the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, we had asked this at April hearing as well, you know, what the Ancestral Lands Commission intended to do about that situation. We were also concerned that the ancestral landowners for the property that was released or pending release or denied release should be notified, especially owners of property which the government of Guam has announced it will retain for other purposes instead of returning to ancestral landowners. So during the last oversight hearing in April 8, 2021, the commission reported that it was still looking for some people associated with unclaimed lands in its inventory, and that no lands have been returned since FY 2019. So for today, I've asked the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission to provide a status of the notification on the notification of ancestral landowners of federal properties designated as "transfer in progress". And that list includes, this is the list from the Secretary of the Navy, and this includes Parcel C of Marble Cave, Tengisan Beach Park, Tengisan Power Plant, ACEORP Maui Tunnel, USO Beach Park, PD Power Plant and Substation, Agania Diesel Power Plant, and Lot 603-1 Upper Heights, also identified as Lot 402-1. I've also asked the status of notification of ancestral landowners of Anderson Bearagada Annex 1 and 2, lots A7A and A7B located in Bearagada, Guam, to include the property known as Eagles Field and nearby lots in Bearagada. I asked the Department of Land Management also to provide a status update on the transfer deed, lease or license of federal properties designated as "transfer in progress" under the Secretary of the Navy's letter 2020. We have since learned of the 2021 letter, so I'm hoping that their information will be updated in that regard. I also asked the Department of Land Management for a status update on the Anderson Bearagada Annex 1 and 2 lots, lots A7A and A7B located in Bearagada, Guam, the Eagles Field, and asked them to prepare relative materials for the committee's review, specifically but not limited to maps, lot numbers, record of owners to include owners prior to the Department of Defense, drafts of leases and copies of correspondence. As stated earlier, 102.2 acres in this area were in January 2021 designated as "eligible for return", and in February 2021, subject to negotiation between federal government and government of Guam for a license. And we have also a copy of government of Guam and Department of Defense entering into agreement, a right of entry agreement. So we'll talk about that also later. Okay, so first, we will hear from the ancestral land, oh, I'd like to, sorry, also recognize the presence of some other of my colleagues, including Senator Sabina Flores Perez. So I want to thank again Senators Teletitukui, Senators Telina Nelson and Senator Sabina Flores Perez for being with us here today, Sizosmasi Senators. Okay. And just so we don't get our terms mixed up, the Navy designates certain properties as "eligible for return", and then in their letter, and then in a spreadsheet, they also call them "potential transfer", or they designate some lots as "potential transfer", and, all right. Okay, so for the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, I'm going to direct this to the Director and the Chairperson. Is the Chairperson Eclavea here today?
Yes, he is.
Okay, I can't see him on the screen.
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, okay. So during April 2018 oversight hearing, Ancestral Lands Commission informed this committee that it is not immediately informed of potential land returns until the deeds have been acquired, and that it was unaware of the listing of land provided during the hearing. The commission agreed to identify the owners of the lots listed for potential return and assist landowners in keeping informed of the status of their properties on this list. Has the commission been made aware of any excess lands identified for return since 2019 that will be reserved or were reserved by the government of Guam for another public use and where landowners notified of that?
Mr. Birch. Okay, Madam Chair, I thought you wanted us to identify yourself first.
Yes, please.
So you want me to answer that question directly rather than giving my testimony? What was the question again?
I just want, I wanted to know if, I wanted to just follow up from the April hearing, whether there's any, there you've learned of any other excess lands that have been identified for return that we did not discuss at that hearing?
Recently.
Or that will be reserved for government of Guam?
Recently, I'm assuming you're discussing the latest negative report that we received recently. In that one, there was one that did increase, and to my understanding, that would be a portion of Lot A7A and B Anderson Bearagada Annex. It used to be about 50 acres, and it increased to about 102. That's the only one we're aware of that has occurred. And we were accessed that information recently. And that was different from the last oversight hearing.
That's correct. We were not aware of that January 21, 2021 letter at the April hearing, and we only recently became aware of that through the FOIAs. So, the 102 acres that were designated now eligible for return, was the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission able to notify the original landowners of this new designation?
This thing became a public knowledge through the media, and rather than us contacting them, several people were able to contact us, and we forwarded that information, our log of interested individuals to your office, I believe, earlier today or yesterday. So normally, what happens is that Guam Ancestral Lands will normally contact ostensible owners when we're notified by the Department of Land Management that property has been declared excess as required by Public Law 2545, Section 80104D. Then, based on that, we would publish a notice and would try to affect the return of the property back to the original landowners or their heirs. And should the government of Guam decide to keep the property for continued public benefit, then the original landowners will become beneficiaries of the land bank trust. And so, we did forward that, the information of those that have contacted us. But until we get the properties and the notices from the Department of Land Management, our normal procedure operating, operations is to wait for that and to get the deeds, get the titles, and perhaps the surveys before we start making contact. And the way we do that is we would advertise it, because we do have a list, but the list of contact is old, and many of the numbers and the contact information is not current. So we depend on the, on people to read the paper, and once we get notice of properties returned, to contact us.
All right, yes, so that's consistent. In April, you also informed me that you did not contact any potential landowners until the land was actually returned and needed to Ancestral Lands Commission or put into your, you know, jurisdiction.
Yes.
But we had talked at that time and since then about the possibilities of Ancestral Lands Commission taking the lead in notifying these landowners, because it was obvious that they had been left out of the process, right? And they were not notified as to the changes in these requests to DoD or the DoD's responses. And I thought, you know, we had discussed it. They should be informed.
Yes, at that time, we did not know, Madam Speaker, of where exactly the properties would be at. And while there is a process by design, the Guam Ancestral Land Commission is not a part of this process.
That's right. It's not a formal part of the process until the land is formally returned. But yeah, I had asked the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission if they were willing to take the lead in informing landowners, because obviously, there's nobody in the government who is doing that at this point. This, the, does, so, the only contact you've had with landowners then is those who have contacted your office?
Yes.
Okay. are you, are you able to confirm the landowners within the 102 acres?
I believe we sent that list to you also of what we have on record.
All right, so you have a, but do you, are you able to confirm the 102 acres, which lots that affects?
Yes, in fact, I could have my land agent, Joey Leon Guero, read it out to you, if that's what you would like.
The lot numbers? So you, and-
I'm not sure if the lot numbers, Joey?
Because the documents that we received from the Navy, just say 102 acres out of the, you know, the huge parcels that they have in Radio Bearagada. So you're familiar with the exact 102, the location of the 102 acres that they want?
Also, my land agent saying we can't confirm the lot numbers until, he could explain it in greater detail to you. We would have worked on this a lot earlier, but we had a lot of downtime here because our land agent, we only have one, and he was down with the coronavirus for a couple of weeks. So he just returned to work this week. And when we're down one person, we're down 30%. And last week, we were down two people, so we're only at 30% operational. We do have a very, very small staff, and that tends to be a problem when one of us, for whatever reason, gets sick or incapacitated. And that did happen over the last week or so, and we were entertaining a couple of FOIAs at that time, and we were able to get those taken care of quickly. But that does put a damper on trying to achieve other things that we need to get a handle on.
All right. So Joey, then, is the list that, of landowners for the 102 acres the same as the list that you gave us? Trying to find that. We're going to put that up later, but Or are there more?
There may be more, Senator, there may be less. These are just my estimation of where the hospital would be built. Again, I don't have access or I wasn't provided any maps identifying where exactly the 102 acres are. So, you know, me just doing the best that I could. I just said, okay, these might be the lots that are affected, and, and, you know, that's the best I can provide to you. Until these lands are surveyed and identified, you know, it's just me kind of just guessing.
Okay, all right. Well, that's what I wanted to confirm today, that it's still kind of not concrete, exactly the lot numbers that are affected, at least as far as the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission is aware of, right? We don't have a concrete list, okay? And maybe, this is for the Chair or the Vice, yeah, the Chair, is the Ancestral Lands Commission, so in this situation, it's not your particular mandate to inform the landowners, but is the Ancestral Lands Commission, now, I thought we had an agreement since April, but is the Ancestral Lands Commission willing to keep these landowners informed of this, this potential return of land and potential non-return of land, right? Where the potential that the government of Guam is considering keeping the land for some other use as opposed to putting it into the Ancestral Lands Commission's jurisdiction?
Yes, yes, of course. I mean, the original landowners are a priority, and any information that we receive that affects the original landowners are priorities to let them, give them information. But like what Joey was saying, we didn't have a concrete idea. I've got some friends of mine that actually are original landowners, and they're aware of it, but I couldn't really give them any details throughout the last few months. But I think, I think they're homing in. I think they do have precise areas now, from what I understand. So as soon as we can, we're moving towards getting in touch with these landowners and letting them know that, you know, this, the, the site is designated for this health suit.
All right. And does the same apply for the list of other lands that are, list as "transfers in progress", is the other designation that the military, the Secretary of Defense put on his list, "transfers in progress"? So for those parcels, if they are being transferred to the government of Guam, are, do you intend to take it upon yourself to notify these landowners even prior to the land being transferred to the Ancestral Lands Commission? Because some of these may face a similar fate where they are not intended to be returned to landowners, and they are intended to be kept by the government of Guam for some other purpose.
Yes, of course. There's a certain type of prudence we need to be, you know, mindful of, because, you know, there's a lot of anticipation and height that, oh, we're going to get our lands back. As you'll find out later on, on these, the transfer authority, the stipulations, there's some issue- there's some issues involved with, it's not, it's not like the excess lands act before that had the stipulations for, you know, that allowed us to do it. So that's what I think we're gonna be discussing tonight.
All right. So there is a list of the, the other parcels that I, I talked about, um, parcel C Marble Cave, Tengiason Beach, et cetera. Those are very concrete. Uh, the number of acres is designated. Uh, are, is your, are you able to notify the landowners of the status of, of these lands? Are you willing to do that, I guess?
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, we are. Yes, of course. I mean,
Well, then my question
Chair, Madam Speaker, um, the way we would have to do that because of the contact information would be to publish an ad to place it out in the media. Uh, you know, I, I want you to understand that, uh, it's very easy to say, yes, we would do this and we'll do that. But then when we have a limited staff in here, one land agent, uh, one special projects coordinator who acts as our admin officer and myself. Uh, you know, we do have had difficult times. Uh, when I first came in here, uh, back in June, the issue was to reestablish the agency because it pretty much all fell apart. We had only one employee left. And uh, since then, we have brought it back up. We, up until March of this year, we had one small office that we shared. And my admin officer and I, depending who was sitting there, it would be the admin officer's office or my office. We had one computer, one desk, one small office. And until we moved and finally got our office here on the third floor in March and moved in. And then finally got access to our files, the John Bond files and, and the others, the files that contain our titles. And we're now placing those in order. There are over thirty-two plus four drawer and five drawer file cabinets. Thus far, we've, we've managed to put, uh, four file cabinets in order and we're man, we're attempting to digitize them because many of them are eaten by termites and we have to reconstruct these files. These are very important files. Uh, ancestral lands has been neglected over the years, uh, during the previous administration, has been pushed to the back uh, side of everywhere. And uh, there was no real consideration given to the ancestral landowners. So today we're digitizing the files slowly with the minimal staff we have. We do have, uh, we're able to get two part-time workers, work four hours a day, uh, who are senior citizens, uh, on a training thing from Department of Labor. And we've assigned them to digitize these files and also to take care of the minutes and other stuff that, that need to be, you know, need a lot of work. Uh, but it is very slow process. Uh, we finally got our scanners in to allow us to do that. Uh, we were using our, our little copiers. Uh, so we are a very small office and uh, the startup, uh, my basic concern back then was getting the office started up and then keeping the doors open. Uh, several times I've written to you and to others that we're about ready to close our doors like in March. But very luckily, the governor stepped up and transferred over forty thousand five hundred dollars to us uh, to keep our doors open from the compact impact funds. And then later in August, as we were running out of funds, she again transferred more funny, more money into us to keep us operational. Uh, what the budget we have now, uh, is enough to keep the current staff with us. And maybe after the first quarter, after we take care of all the other bills, we could probably hire, uh, one more land agent and that's about it. Uh, I want you to be aware that in this office, there are two unclassified employees and one classified employee who's eligible in a year for retirement.
Mr. Burge?
Yeah, so I'm just trying to give you the heads up that we have limited staff and we need to bring other people in to keep the continuity going so that we can do the job that is being asked of us.
I understand. So these are the longstanding issues facing ancestral lands commission that we
It is. And the problem is we don't necessarily have uh, the available bodies to do what is being asked. I'm just saying.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to
We're able to do so.
Today because in April, I, was my understanding from that hearing that the ancestral lands commission was going to take it upon themselves to notify these landowners, but it doesn't seem to have been the case.
It's been, it's been very difficult. Yes, it's been extremely challenging.
Hey, and I'm very glad that the, the commissioners are here. Because there is no other entity in the government of Guam that is charged with, you know, taking care of the ancestral landowners. It's just, it's just the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. So I know it's not exactly in your mandate that you're going to go out of your way to notify them until the land is actually in your hands. But in this case, that's not what's happening. We are seeing that the government of Guam might never put this land into your hands. And so uh, when we discussed this in April, it was our concern that we thought these landowners should be notified. We thought they should be kept in the loop. We thought that the ancestral lands commission should be kept in the loop as well because you have been saying you were not in that loop. And so that you can, you know, for your part, inform the landlord. So that's what we're confirming today. So it looks to be like the status is the same as in April. Landowners have not necessarily been notified unless they've called the commission. And uh, so that, and that this may be beyond your capabilities of, of notifying them at this time. But I do appreciate, Mr. Chair, that you are saying you're willing to do this and if the commissioners can find a way, uh, that's what I'm asking. That's what I asked in April, is that you find a way to do it. Because there's no one else in the government to do it. I'm trying to do it myself. I do not have the information that you have available to you unless I FOIA you. And so I want to thank you for your work. And I know that you are working hard. I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying we have unprecedented circumstances before us that, that are, are, you know, if we don't act on them, the land will, the land transfers will occur, ancestral landowners will be left out. Um, but all right, we'll, we'll leave this in a, um, we'll, we'll maybe come back for other questions from other senators. I'm going to move to the Department of Land Management. And the first question I want to ask Director Borja is, do you have a copy of the October fifth, twenty twenty letter from the governor to the Secretary of the Navy?
Madam Chair, I don't know really what letter you're referring to. I may have seen it. I do not normally, uh, uh, download letters, uh, you know, forwarded to me. So I'm not particularly sure on that. But I am ready to present, uh, you know, the object of the, uh, oversight hearing as a status report on those particular parcels. I am willing really to get down to the information for each part.
The reason I'm asking about the October fifth letter is because we are here today because of the Secretary of the Navy's, uh, letter in January responding to an October fifth letter. So in his January twenty one letter, that's where he says these lands are now designated as, um, eligible for return. And there, he also designates them as potential transfers, right? Or, or he also designates them as transfers in progress. But in order to know what other requests were made of the Secretary of the Navy, we need to see the letter from the governor, right? Because the Secretary of the Navy implies that there were additional requests made, but he was pretty much affirming the, the medical complex properties, but not the other ones at that time. So I just wanted to see what the other requests that were made. And you're saying, Mr. Borja, that you're not aware of those other requests?
I, I am ready for the, uh, for the status report on this particular parcel.
But are you aware? Mr. Borja, Director Borja, are you aware of any other requests made that, uh, for additional lands that were not in the documents that, that we have been discussing? In the governor's letter to, in twenty, in twenty nineteen or in the Secretary of the Navy's response in twenty twenty or the Secretary of the Navy's response in twenty twenty one, are you aware of any other?
I, I, I am aware of, uh, two letters where the governor requested, uh, huge amounts of property. Yes, I am.
All right. So is one of those letters, the October fifth letter?
Uh, you know, without looking at a copy, Madam Chair, I, I can't say which one it is.
Okay. So is there any property that you're aware of that has been requested that is not in the list of the Secretary of the Navy, not been responded to?
Uh, I can't, I can't say. I, I believe parcel C of Marble Cave, you know, hasn't gone through the process. Otherwise, uh, land management would have been requested to do an evaluation and, uh, an evaluation and authentication of that particular parcel. That's the only one that was on your list that, uh, I don't have any information on. But the other parcels that you asked about, uh, I do have information.
Yes, okay. But yeah, I'm trying to confirm the request made from the government of Guam side, which this is a process that is put in place by the federal government, by Congress. It says, governor's request, Navy, Secretary of the Navy responds. So I'm trying to confirm the requests that were made. Otherwise, yeah, we were only seeing the side of this equation, yeah.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Saying under oath that you don't have a copy of the October fifth, twenty twenty.
Uh, you know, not, not that I know of, I know, but Madam Chair, that information should be coming from the land, uh, the local redevelopment authority, which is DIDA. Uh, these requests for these properties are actually initiated by DIDA after reviewing, uh, you know, federal holdings on it. And then, you know, that's when the governor makes the request for specific one.
Yes. So Gida makes reports to the governor. The governor writes a letter to the Secretary of the Navy. The Secretary of the Navy responds to the governor. So we're missing one step in this process. The, that's the governor's letter of October fifth that the Navy's responding to. All right, um. So I'd like to start with the Eagles Field, the Anderson Annex, A seven, A and B. And as we said in the Navy, uh, Secretary of the Navy's January twenty twenty one letter, they've updated the, what used to be fifty acres, uh, eligible for transfer to one hundred and two acres. Um, and I wanted to ask you, this is what I've been asking you, can you advise which lots are included in these one hundred and two acres?
Madam Chair, could we, uh, start the, at least my, uh, presentation, my, uh, response in the order that you presented uh, in that letter to me, uh, rather than
I gave you a list of all the, Director Borja, I gave you a list of all the properties that were listed by the, the Secretary of the Navy. Yes. So are you unable to answer about the Anderson Annex? We just need to know the lot.
No, no, but I would like to take it in the order, uh, you know, because, uh, I, I would like to take it in the order that you presented. You left out one parcel, by the way.
Which one?
Yeah, parcel, uh, seven, Camp Covington, in the letter you sent to me. You didn't include that, but that was included. And I would sound your objection if I could, uh, if I could, uh, if I could do that.
We will, we will be getting to Director Borja. We will be getting to all the parcels. Director Borja, I, I, I appreciate the work that you've done on this, but I, I want to really streamline this. I'd like to get to the Eagles Field parcels because we have landowners who are waiting and I'd like to hear, let them hear this testimony first. And then we can address all the other parcels. So if we could just address the Eagles Field, Anderson Annex first. The first question we need to know, and this is what the most important question for the answers to landowners is which lots are, are included in the one hundred and two acres that the Secretary of the Navy highlights? And the one hundred and two acres that the Department of Land Management is, uh, dealing with, with the Navy for the right of access? So do you have a map that shows a lot numbers? Uh, you know, imposed on the one hundred and two acres?
You know, Madam Chair, we have maps, but those are draft maps that we made the mistake on one of them and didn't include any. So, so those are draft maps. But in the land management process and involvement of, uh, uh, looking at properties that may be available for a new hospital, uh, looking at the original lot for that parcel really was not our, uh, uh, you know, that was not our focus. Our focus was finding available land, uh, for that. So we really didn't do that, uh, until the last minute when, uh, uh, people were bringing up, uh, that issue. But for the other parcels that, uh, you mentioned in your report, we did that as part of the review process under the environmental committee, under the Lieutenant Governor's Office for Land Management and EPA to do an environmental report. So we did that for those properties. But for the Eagles Field, uh, is called Eagles Field, uh, no, we did not. But I have seen, I have seen, uh, overlays of that, but those, uh, uh, were not created, uh, you know, by land management, were not updated by land management. As a matter of fact, uh, your staff assistant, uh, Andrea was requesting for another copy of a, an overlay that I sent to her because the bottom left, uh, was, uh, was cut off. And I apologize for that, but that was the copy, uh, you know, we had. And information like that is best obtained actually from the, uh, ancestral lands commission, you know, who have those maps and who generate those maps. But we did not. We attempted to do an overlay of the one hundred and two acres onto the original map provided, uh, uh, you know, that the Navy had during their condemnation. Uh, but we made a, a couple of serious errors. And I told staff, I said, no, uh, you know, we can't use this until we verify that, uh, information on that map and, and we haven't. Uh, it was, there was, it was a particular piece of property along the, um, eastern boundary that, that we missed out. It was subdivided and we missed it out. And, uh, after knowing that and we're dealing with this whole map, we're trying to overlay using today's technology on that. Uh, those overlay maps, even under Google, uh, they are not of the accuracy that, uh, you can safely say that, uh, uh, your property is halfway in or halfway out or completely in there. Uh, as, uh, land agent Long Guero, that, you know, a survey would, uh, be need to be done with that, which the ancestral lands, uh, require for those properties returning. We have a draft of that, Senator.
To the ancestral lands commission, they will do that. But right now, it's only going between Department of Land Management and, and Joint Region Marianas. Those are the discussions. So I, are you going to present us a map that shows the potential? Now, it might not be the exact, but the potential lots that are included in the one hundred and two acres?
I believe we gave that to your office, Senator.
All right. So you're saying this is the best map you have. And, but this map just shows, uh, we'll put this map up. But this map, um, I don't think shows the one hundred and two acres. Are you saying that's the one hundred and two acres?
I, I don't see the map.
Okay, uh, can we put up the map? DLM overlay, it's called Eagles Field Overlay.
I see them, but that.
They're gonna put it on the screen.
Yeah, it looks like it, at least the title.
In order for us to even try to inform the ancestral landowners, we need to know the lot numbers that are involved.
That, that's correct. I agree.
That's why we are seeking your assistance in this.
Ancestral lands, there's a top notch researcher for that information that you just
Well, they don't know the one hundred acres. They don't know where the one hundred and two acres are being overlaid. That's the information we're trying to get from the Department of Land Management, not this math staff. Please go to the Eagles Field Overlay. So this is the map we received from you. And in the bottom, on the bottom left, on the right is of course the cliff, Fadian. But on the bottom left, these are the lots where Eagles Field. It, see the road? The road is even cut off that goes through or goes by Eagles Field. So, so the bottom
My apologies, uh, Madam Speaker, I don't see the map on the screen. I, I apologize.
I'm seeing it. Can you, Mr. Lawanda, can you see the map?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't, uh, let me, uh,
Just on the Zoom, should be right there. It's the anyways, it's the map you provided us. So for those who are watching, you see the road, um, the road is the back road to Anderson, of course. Uh, the bottom that's cut off is the, it's Uh, the bottom that's cut off is the, it's the Eagles Field area where the football field is not shown.
Okay, Madam Speaker, I see it, I see it, thank you.
So what I'm asking you, Mr. Director, is where is the 100 acres? Because this shows all of the military's property in this area. We need to know where are the 100 acres going to be laid down?
Actually, what this map shows, it's actually an overlay of, uh, three maps. One is released by 1994 aerial photographs, the black and white. And then I see some blue lines in there, which I'm assuming is the boundaries for the parcels returned. And then I see the red lines with the yellow number. And those should be the original lot line and the original lot number. So what you're looking at, and then you see some green lines on the top there, uh, those green lines, I believe, are an easement.
All right, well, the map we got had no legend on it, so we're unable to really make any concrete determination out of it. That's why I'm asking you for your assistance. And unfortunately, I have to ask it in an oversight hearing. So I'm asking you, if you could please point out to us, where are the 100 acres? Which lot numbers here are included in the 102 acres?
Uh, that, it would be the lots on the bottom left-hand side. Uh, and, uh, with one step further, the Ancestral Lands Commission, uh, uh, could figure that out uh, with, uh, GIS experience, uh, because the ancestral land parcel that was returned encompasses the western boundary of the property.
Mr. Borja, the Ancestral Lands Commission does not have a map of the 102 acres that the military is designated for return. So they cannot pick these lots here, which ones would be included in the 100 acres?
We'll provide that to them, we'll provide that to them.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking for you to show us today. So, for example, it's not just the bottom far left. If it's 100 acres, it looks like it's gonna go up, uh, you know, much further than the actual football field, right?
Oh, yeah.
Potentially, do you know the uppermost boundary of the 100?
Right before the buffer zone of the, uh, weather satellite, weather, uh, station there, the weather facility. If you zoom in closer to that, you see that golf ball over there in Lalo. That would be the northernmost boundary. The westernmost boundary would be the ancestral land parcel.
This is the area.
Yeah, Ancestral Lands have their own map of the parcel that was returned to them. So their boundary is already established.
All right, Mr. Borja, I, I just think we're playing semantics here. What, what the ancestral lands does not have is the 102 acres that are designated by the Department of Defense.
No, I, I know exactly what you mean.
Only the Department of Land Management is aware of that overlay. Okay, let's go to another map. Let's go to the right of entry map, please, staff. Oh, that is.
Madam Speaker, um.
It's called.
Madam Speaker. Ju- just, just a quick question, if, if you, if we do end up going to that previous map, can you have Mr. Borja, instead of stating, um, terrain feature, to just state the, the numbers that are outlined in the map?
Yes, thank you, Senator, that's a good idea. I was hoping he would do that. We'll go back to that. I just wanna show, this is the, the map on the screen now is a map that was attached to a right of entry, entered into, it's an agreement entered into between the Department of Land Management for the Government of Guam and Joint Region Marianas. This is a right of entry supposedly for 100 acres, so that the Department of Land Management can go in and survey this, this land to be used. And so you'll see this map shows the back road to Anderson, it shows the road going into the football field. It also shows, um, from my lay view, land that has already been returned to landowners on, on this overlay. So, this is what I want to know, what are the lot numbers here, Mr. Director? You can see the lots in the yellow lines cut out, and so if those are lots, I just wanted to know if you could confirm which numbers those include and, um, you know.
You know, yes, Senator, and, and I apologize, you know, I apologize if you think that it's, uh, very much semantic. But, you know, our focus was in getting the entire site. Using this map and that other map that you showed, that could put in the lot numbers, you know, themselves.
Exactly, that's exactly what we asked you, that's exactly what we are asking, okay.
That might need to be done right now.
That's what I asked you. Even sent a follow-up letter to ask you this yesterday, so that we could have this, so that, so that we don't have to play runaround with these landowners. Which lots, which, whether their lot is included or not, because if you look at this, the football field is on the bottom. You see that it says hospital site Eagles Field? That's even bigger than the area encompassing the football field.
I, I totally, I totally understand your question, Madam Chair.
Confirm, Mr. Borja, is this map, the blue area showing 102 acres?
No.
What does the blue area show?
Uh, that's probably, uh, looking more like maybe, uh, four, 500 acres.
All right, so where does the 102 acres boundary?
Okay, you see where it says hospital site?
Yes.
If you extend that line there, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't know if you can, I guess. If you extend that line horizontally all the way up to the end of the red line, which is the border of the ancestral land property, you have a nice rectangle containing 102 acres, approximately, you know, subject to survey.
Okay, that's what we want.
For the 102 acres, and this map doesn't show it. What this map shows is the original lot line. The blue, um, colors there, what that is, is that the parcel that is under the control of the military, including that little thing on the top right. And then the red lines, uh, are of course easements and the yellow, uh, pop, they speak for themselves on that. So, on this map, where, you know, as a person, and, you know, thank you for saying a layperson, but as a person with a little bit of experience in math, uh, where is the 102 acres? Uh, it would be here, 48 plus 54, and it's not explicit in the map, and, you know, my apologies, it's, it's, uh, it's very much semantic, but, you know, these GIS guys, uh, on that. But if you extend this line, that, the horizontal line, right above the word hospital site, all the way over to the red side, that is approximately 102 acres, and that's that size. Those yellow lines in that, once you do that, uh, rectangle, they call it a polygon, once you do that rectangle there, uh, those yellow lines inside that rectangle are the lot lines, uh, for properties that, uh, uh, maybe totally or maybe partially in the new hospital site.
Okay, and just confirm on the right side, so there's one on the left and one on the right, the one on the right that says hospital site 54 AC plus or minus. There's no, there's no top border on that, on that, but you're saying horizontally across to the left, I mean, to the red.
And that, right, but I, I, it's an assumption of a border. That's the reason for the right of entry for land management to go in there and complete that, uh, requested, uh, uh, 100 acres. Actually, the request was 100 acres, uh, military came back at the 102. Uh, we need to, to give you some access increments to parcels, and of course, we were happy to agree to 102 acres.
All right, so it, I, I only have, um, a couple lot numbers that I think I can confirm are included in this. That's 2517, 5276, 5275, 2291, 2296. Do you have a list of lot numbers, Mr. Borja, that are included in the 100 acres?
I believe we actually gave you the lot file, the so-called Bond Brown file. And I, I got that, uh, I don't know, maybe a, a couple of days ago, three days ago, after Mr. Leon Guerrero came back from his COVID leave. I got that and, uh, transmitted that to you, uh, immediately, I didn't even look at the file. I transmitted those files immediately to you, uh, via thumb drive.
But you're saying that.
Now, I don't know, I, I cannot confirm whether all those files cover all those lots in the, uh, in the, uh, in the hospital side, in the proposed hospital side.
Uh, yes, that's the problem. N- n- no one wants to confirm for us which lot numbers are involved in this potential hospital site, the potential 100 acres. Okay, I'm gonna go back to that other.
We can confirm that, uh, Speaker. It just, it just wasn't in our process, uh, when we were looking at the, uh, hospital site, uh, at that proposed hospital site. For the other parcels which you're setting up, uh, you were to set up this, uh, oversight hearing, I have that information.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can we go back to the ma- last map, please? Just. It's called Eagles Field Overlay, yes. Can you zoom in to the bottom left? And, uh, maybe a little bit more? Uh, do we got the bottom? Is this the bottom? Okay, thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Borja, could you please help us, uh, me and Senator Nelson, just to, if you could draw your line, your imaginary line here, and tell us which lots might be included?
Okay, um, I don't know if you, I don't think you can see, uh, my, can you see my cursor? I don't think so, I.
No, unfortunately, no.
Yeah, anyway, um, let's take a look at the eastern boundary. And that is pretty much, uh, easy to discern, because if you can see those white houses and everything, you can see that they're kind of like in a straight line up and down. Pretty much, right, you can, you can see, uh, you read me there. If you can see those houses to the left side, and you can see that they're almost in a straight line, that's the boundary of this parcel. Okay? So use that as your orientation, right, thank you for, uh, doing that. And you can see Lalo Road, Lalo Street coming in. That's the one that comes right off Route 10.
Please keep the map down on the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, keep the map down.
Down on the bottom left corner.
Yeah, it is my regard already.
Yeah, that's good, keep it there.
So, yeah, good, 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 so you can see, uh, where Route 10 is, and then, uh, Lalo Road comes in here, and then kind of takes a straight up and downturn. That's the eastern boundary of the entire, uh, parcel under jurisdiction. If you go down further, where the bottom corner is, that, that line kind of intersects with Route 15, that's the left-hand corner of the potential, uh, hospital complex site. And then everything to the right, all the way to that red line, which is the boundary of the ancestral land property that has been returned. And then, of course, you have your southern boundary, which is Route 15. You have your eastern boundary, which is that straight line, uh, Lalo, uh, Street. And then you have your western boundary, already established, uh, because of the Ancestral Lands Commission. So the only, uh, uh, way that you can go now to get 102 acres is up north. And of course, up north, you can use the reference of the, uh, as you can see, even in this 1994, uh, a photograph, you can see the, uh, weather facility, uh, in, in that area. So that's kind of like good to orientate yourself. One thing that's constant throughout the years is that road coming in from Route 15, that access, the road coming in. And also, that, that's a good reference also.
All right, so does, does the 102 acres include lots, um, 10, 1006 and 1010, or it goes below that?
I believe it goes below that. There might be a small portion, uh.
Okay, 1006.
Yeah, because I.
You're not going, uh, parallel, 1004, going like 1004 and then going across?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think so. I don't think so.
You think it's, it's further down?
I think it's further down.
Okay, tell me where?
Okay, fill the other map, so we can compare it.
Oh, no, okay, no, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. Before you move to the map, can you look at, uh, 5280 on the right side? There's a red line that divides 5280.
Yep, and the lot number.
You're talking about, is that the boundary?
Yes, I believe.
So the lot. 5280 is divided into, and that's the line you're talking about?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, and so let's.
It belongs to a commercial.
And, and so talk to me about this circle, this is the weather station, you're saying?
Uh, I tell you, these other circles on the bottom, some of them.
No, the one in the middle, the one in the middle of the screen right now.
The water is kind of like the edge?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a former facility, and keep in mind, this is the 1994 aerial photograph.
Where is the 100?
I don't think that's there.
Okay, so where does, I don't know, then why did they give me this map? Where does the 100 acres go? Does it go below that facility, below that facility?
You know, Senator, if you can bring up the other map, the blue map?
It doesn't have this on that map, sir. We can bring it in.
Bring up, bring up, there is a little bit of, uh, extra work you have to do here to, uh, to research this. If you can bring up the, the blue map, and that's why I was, uh, referring you to the access easement that is the constant. This is the best overlay map that we have, that we gave you, although it is 1994, because it does show the original lot line and the original lot number.
Right, but it doesn't tell me the 100 acres.
It is, yes, you're right, it doesn't show you, the other blue map does show you.
Yes, that's why I've asked for an overlay. Okay, let's move on. That's the issue.
It's a little bit more of a GIS work, Senator, Madam Speaker. It just needs a little bit of work, and, uh, uh, unfortunately or fortunately, uh, in our review of the, uh, potential sites for the, uh, medical complex, you know, that was not one of our, uh, uh, things that we needed to do to, uh, get that survey going.
All right, well, that's my focus here today, is to try to find out which lots are affected, so the, the ancestor landowners can be informed. That's, that's really the, the main focus of this hearing. Okay, we could, uh, we'll remove the maps, we're gonna go back to. I wanted to talk to you, Director, about there's correspondence in the FOIA documents regarding, uh, a lease issuance to Government of Guam for Anderson A7 and B. It, there's like an estimated timeline for lease, and it talks about environmental requirements scheduled to start in July 2021, estimated to complete archaeological survey in August 2022, and the NHPA and the NEPA process by August 2022, and lease review by GovGuam and JRM, finalized scheduled for December 2022. I, I wanted to ask for this time, this lease, so the, the lease will not be finalized until December 22, according to this timeline, is that your best estimate?
Uh, Madam Chair, I don't know that the decision is made, uh, already concerning a lease, you know, on the property, whether it's a lease or a license or a lease, I don't know if that decision has been made. Uh, I'm working on the premise of a license, uh, to be able to conduct, uh, uh, two very important surveys, uh, archaeological and, uh, environmental surveys, uh, you know, so whether that is, and, uh, and for me, for my purposes, uh, those timelines are always draft. Uh, for example, uh, we were supposed to finish the, uh, the survey by, I believe, August 31st. I, I don't know what, uh, which timeline or which version you're looking at, which draft you're looking at. We were supposed to finish it August 31st, and, uh, uh, we finished it in July, you know, so, uh, I, I don't know, uh, like I said, uh, I'm not, uh, uh, you know, I made the recommendations and information, but the decision whether it's gonna be a license or a lease is, uh, basically a policy decision, uh, according to the, um, Public Law 106, cycle four, I believe.
All right, so prior to either. All right, so prior to either of those, you are conducting surveys pursuant to a grant of access, right?
Well, we're done with that survey, which is the result of that map, that track 18308 map, which the ancestral land hasn't gotten yet, I agree, because that map was just transmitted to the Healthcare Steering Committee, you know, who actually requested that the survey be done.
All right, let's put that map up. That's called Track 18308.
That's correct.
The parcelling map. Can we put that map up, please? Okay, so Mr. Borja, this talks about, if we can zoom in, it talks about Track 18308. It does not have lot numbers like we saw on the other maps. And so I would like you to talk us through this, why, you know, how are we going to know which lot numbers are affected from this map? This is a track parcelling map. Can we zoom in more? Thanks, bottom, yeah.
And that was not the purpose of, that was not the purpose of this map, Madam Speaker.
I know. This is your, yeah, so tell us the purpose of this map.
The purpose of this map is to get a legal description of the 100, 102 acres to be used for the medical complex so that a license can be given to. Documents of transfer require actually a legal description, and that legal description is, of course, derived from an actual survey and like that. And when we did the survey, we, you know, there were several interesting things that came about. But that was the purpose of this map. Page two of this map is actually, if you can go to page two, I want to explain this to you. People sometimes have a misunderstanding on the tail. So page two of this real big long piece there on the left side of the map, conceptually, relatively, and proportionately, is actually this size related to the 102 acres, as you can take a look, if you bring down page one again. To the left of that, you will see that street there going up and down, which is above that line that I described to you. And again, the reason why in that blue map, that line was not cut all the way across, because we didn't really know where the boundary, the northern boundary or the top boundary of the medical complex would be, because knowing the three constraints, in other words, three of our boundaries were already set. The southern one, Route 15, the western one, the ancestral land parcel, the eastern one with the private property now, all those houses. So the only way that we could go would be to go up into, you know, the property that is under the existing, under the Navy. We certainly did not want to go into the private property next door. We certainly didn't want to go across the street, Route 15, to go for that property, private property. And we certainly didn't want to go to the ancestral land property which was returned. So the only way that we could get 100 acres was that line up. And, you know, people, they don't ask the question, I've never had the question, somebody says, "Why 100 acres?" You know, GMH is not in 100 acres. Why 100 acres? You know, so once you're done with your question, I would like the opportunity to present the process where we arrived over in Manila. You know, so-
Okay, that's not, that's not really the focus of today's hearing. I'd like to just go to, if this map, if you can point out to us where the hospital will be placed down. There's the, if you can zoom in a little bit more, the circle area is titled an Anderson Communication Annex Number 2. And then below it on the left, it just says track numbers, track numbers. But this map is supposed to show the 100 acres, so if you could explain to us where where are the 100 acres in this map?
Okay, Lot 1, Track 1808.
Okay, that's on the bottom left, bottom left square. We could, pointer there, can you get the pointer there, please?
That's, that's actually, that's actually one, one parcel.
The square? Yeah, this. Can you revolve the pointer?
Right, that's, that's the one. Nope, nope, not there, yes. That's 48 acres.
Okay.
That's one lot.
Okay.
Okay, Lot number 2 in that track is-
To the right.
Yes, there we go, 54 acres. If you add those two numbers up, 54 and 48, that would be 102 acres.
Okay, and you're including the easement-
Yeah, but we're, but now that we surveyed it, we're gonna ask for a little bit more.
Okay, and the easements are these, those are also included because, of course, they have to create easements, right? That's the plan.
But that's, that's above, over and above the 102 acres.
Okay, all right.
The other easement that I want to point out on the left-hand side is that since the 1970s, Gov Guam, GPA, DWA installed on property under Navy jurisdiction, which this parcel is, you know, let's face it, that's what it is today. They install water lines and power lines to service people in that area. And so we're asking the Navy to please return that also to us, which is about 2 acres. So we're asking for about 7 acres over and above the 102 concerning access. Now, there's two important reasons for that right-of-way, which is Lot 5 right-of-way. Number one is that there's existing Gov Guam infrastructure on there, sewer lines, water lines, power poles. You know, we want that back, and when we take it back, it looks like GPA and Water Works will get it, you know, according to their bond terms. And that's for public benefit, and especially for those residents in the area. You know, they went in and put it in, of course, it wasn't for the military. But it is a source for access, and it is a source for utilities access in that. So we're asking the Navy, now that we surveyed the property, now that you gave us a right-of-entry, we surveyed the property, and these are our findings.
All right, thank you. Can I ask you, there's a license, according to the governor's press conference today or interview, there's a license now the AG's office for review, and then signature. It says they anticipate the license will finish with AG review within December, signatures between Navy and the Department of Land Management. The survey has been completed and was registered with DLM, so it's a public document. Anyone can download and take a look. So this is the survey we're talking about? Can you tell me what document it is that you're going to be signing?
The license, Land Management signs drop on certain licenses.
Okay, so what is the term, what's a term of that license? What is the term of that license? How long?
I believe it's two years. I haven't, you know, for draft, I haven't seen it. And the purpose of that license is to conduct the environmental survey on it.
Okay.
Now, if the survey comes back and says, you know, this property may be good, may be bad, you know, the environmental survey, then, you know, we'll deal with it at that time. And if it comes back in a positive review, then certainly, you know, this is the size that we're looking at of the proposed medical complex.
All right.
So which site, which lot is the hospital gonna go on? I don't know, either lot, you know, that's up to the, to the other committee that is doing the site plan for that. I just want to say that, you know, whoever built that first will probably be the one that has the money to build already. You know, that the money for the hospital is still being, you know, worked out. But Public Health does already have some federal money, I believe, to build their upper-level lab, so they might be the first ones to go. And this idea, Speaker, of a medical complex is not new. And if I get the opportunity to present the process by which we arrived at Manila, you will see that the Government of Guam did reserve property for a hospital, for a medical complex. So this medical complex concept, this is not new. This is back in 1993.
Did they reserve this property for a medical complex?
No, they reserved the property in the middle of Talampago Order.
Okay.
That is totally unsuitable.
Mr. Borja, okay, so we're gonna put up a map now, and then I'm gonna go to the ancestral landowners. And this is why I was trying to get confirmation as to which lot numbers are affect which landowners. So we could put up the list, or let's just show the map of Eagles Field that we got from Ancestral Lands. This is-
Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, you know, maybe Mr. Birch is not aware because he just came aboard, but I know Mr. Leon Guerrero, so where, you know, the Ancestral Land Commission, from time to time, publishes full-page ads in the paper, you know, requesting landowners to come in on those unclaimed things to set, so-
Right.
You know, maybe not under Mr. Birch's thing, but certainly under Mr. Leon Guerrero, there's been no defined landowners to come in.
That's correct. They do that for the unclaimed lands. We asked them in April to do that for these lands, the potential returned lands or lands to be returned, potential lands potentially to be kept by the Government of Guam. If we could just put up, it's called Eagles Field Map Zoomed?
Madam Speaker?
Yes.
Could I just add something real quick? This is the first- This is, this is actually the first time I'm seeing some of the information here. I guess probably basically because it's still in the process. Maybe a little bit conceptual, but if we had, you know, if we had the information that I'm seeing here, I think very easily our land needed, Joey could have done an overlay, a quick overlay and give us, you know, preliminary information on the lots, where they're actually, you know, but with to confirm that that's where it's at, but we could have easily got that information on the lot numbers. I just wanna bring that up and make that for the record.
That's what I'm hoping is going to happen, because that's certainly-
That's the first time, first time I've seen it.
Yeah, it doesn't put lot numbers either, so that's, you know, absolutely-
I can see that he could-
No document, yeah, that has been produced.
First time I'm seeing, I'm seeing this information.
Right. Okay, so this is the, this is the map we got from Ancestral Lands. It shows some of the lots just on what they call Eagles Field, Lot 2517, 5276, 5275, 2291, 2296. I think it's fair to say that based on the overlay, the overlays that we have seen, that that the intended area within the 100 acres exceeds these lot numbers. I think that's, that's the finding number one. It definitely exceeds the slot numbers. It looks like it goes, it includes slots 2290, 229-
Oh, yeah, that, that's agreed, Madam Speaker, because none of those lots are 100 acres.
Right, and, and so many more lots, and so I just want the landowner-
Yeah, except Lot 2519, which is almost a million per meter. But 90% of the property taken from that lot was returned back to the original landowner, not by the military, not by the Ancestral Land Commission. That's at 2517.
Wait, what are you saying about 2517?
That 2517 in the 1941 parcel, I believe, is about 970,000 per meter.
Right.
And that was used by the military-
It goes across, because that's, it also includes across the street, right?
Exactly, right, right.
So we're not talking about those parts right now. This is still the part that, no, okay. All right, so if we could, just, that's, we're pointing that out. So now, if you could just focus on the lots, 251, so we're gonna hear now from a couple of the landowners who've been waiting, and I just want to show the senators the lots that they are involved with. That's 2291. Hmm, 2291. You see that one? It's kind of in the middle-left, and also Lot- 2517. Okay, on the bottom. All right, so thank you for that map. And so, yes, that's what we want, is an overlay. Hopefully, we can get that published, and everyone who has, who knows their lot numbers will know that their lot numbers are under the hospital overlay or not. That's, that's really the goal here. That's what we've been asking since April. That's what we want. Okay, so if we could hear from-
Madam Speaker, I thought the oversight hearing was the status report on those parcels.
It is. We're gonna go back to the other parcels after this Eagles Field. So I'm gonna conclude the Eagles Field, because these landowners are here, and then I'm going back to you for the rest of the course.
Thank you. Thank you very much for appointing them the time. Thank you.
All right, so we could begin with, here we go, sorry, Mr. Emmanuel T. Cruz and Maria LG Cruz for Lot 2291.
Okay, good evening, Madam Speaker, all dignitaries present in this public hearing. My name is Emmanuel De Norio Cruz. My siblings are Delores Juan, Maria Frank, Teresita, Jose, and Rosa. We are the children and heirs of Antonio Piraya Cruz, also known as Jesus Antonio Piraya Cruz Familian Sada. Our mother was Juana De Norio Cruz Familian Cipiano. My testimony is regarding our land adjacent to Eagles Field, in which my father was one of the defendants named in Civil Action Number 34-50, whereby lands owned by our father, his father, Manuel, and his siblings, Jose, Jesus, Ramon, Francisco, and Trinidad, were taken by the United States government through proceedings in eminent domain after July 21st, 1944, and before August 23rd, 1963. The issue of compensation for the United States of America, taking of our property interest in these simple lot numbers, 10, 13, and 2291 in the municipality of Baragada, was not adjudicated in a contested trial in the District Court of Guam. On April 1st, 1982, my siblings and I filed with the United States District Court in the territory of Guam, civil case number 820137, complaint, complaint for compensation, 48 USC versus United States of America. We made references of the stipulated judgment entered in Civil Action Number 34-50.
Just a minute, Mr. Cruz, I can't hear you right now.
To Jesus Antonio P. Cruz and for the taking of Lot Number 2291 in the municipality of Baragada, $1,539.58 to Jesus, to Antonio Jesus Piraya Cruz for a one-half increase of units A and B. We were informed that other payments may be made, may have been made, which have not yet been asserted. Based on these dollars figures, my father was not just least compensated, he was paid roughly 9 cents per square meters. During a discussion with my father concerning the US acquisition of this property, the US, through its agents and employees, unfairly represented that our ancestors would lose whatever compensation was owed if they did not sign said stipulation, and the amount offered to be paid as compensation was the reasonable and fair market value of the property, and that no higher amount could be obtained under any circumstances or other further proceedings. Relying upon the US representative, our father was induced- Relying upon the US representative, our father was induced to execute and set documents. The child's and attendant consequences of war and foreign occupation were still pressed in minds of our father and other citizens of Guam, making them emotionally provoke to the request by the US forces and its representative. Thus, preventing them from making a wise business judgment, and there was a lack of civilian apparatus available. I grew up around what is now known as the Eagles Field. I recall my grandfather, my father, his siblings Ramon, Francisco, and Trinidad, who were all farming around the Eagles Fields area. They raised all sorts of crops, corn, toffee, taro, yam, sweet potato, breadfruit, assorted bananas, papaya, guava, tangerine, orange, avocado, lemon, sour sap, and animals, chicken, goats, pigs, parabol, which was their main source of livelihood. My father's brother Jose had joined the military and left the island. For, as for Jesus, he reside in Ascen. At the age of seven years old, my father told us that we had to vacate our farmland because the military is moving in. My grandfather and aunt Fida trailed their house to Agana where the former raw dish is at. Next to that is my grandfather's property. Uncle Frank trailed his house to Tamuning by the former San Anthony Church. To Ramon, trailed his house to the old Price Road in Mangillo. My father trailed our house to our present location, Sada Street, which is just a few distance down the, the road across the Eagles Field. Vacating our farmland and having to relocate was very emotional. It separated the family bonding between my grandfather, my father, and his siblings. It was a big loss to our family's livelihood. We have no choice but to start over with what little we have. Governor Lou Young Guerrero, please accept the intention of the Navy Secretary Kenneth Redway to declare as excess land property it condemned from eighteen families decades ago at at and surrounding Eagles Fields in Mangillo. Once declared excess and returned by Congress, consistent with public law twenty five dash forty five, it should be returned to the heirs and the pre-condemnation owners or the ancestral landowners. Governor Lou Young Guerrero, please do not try to circumvent public law twenty five dash forty five by leasing it from the, from the Navy for a hundred years. This land, our land, was condemned decades ago. If you're looking to build a new hospital, why not use the Oka- Oka Point in Tamuning? That land in Tamuning is available, ready for construction of a new hospital and and will absolutely be more cost effective. Governor Lou Young Guerrero, please request that Navy Secretary Kenneth Redway to proceed with the process of returning declared excess land it condemned from the eighteen families decades ago at is at and surrounding Eagles Field in Mangillo, which at present phrase is not under public use. Magahaga put Sabot ad zudaham. The people of the land put a boat, magahaga ad zudaham. Thank you.
Jesus Massey, Mister Cruz. Is there others in your family who are there present who need to testify? There Mister John Cruz. Maria? Are you on, also going to testify?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Speaker, and all dignitaries present in this public hearing. My name is Maria Young Guerrero Cruz. I am the administrator of the state of my late grandfather, Sylvester Borja Young Guerrero, and his late sister, Anna Borja Young Guerrero. My grandfather, together with his siblings, Anna Maria Catlos Exosperanza, Gonzalo and Boquin, were ancestral landowners of lot number five two seven four in the municipality of Barigada. My testimony is regarding our ancestral land, lot five two seven four in the municipality of Barigada. I believe lot number fifty two seventy four is situated in the um, Nimitz Gulf Course, close to the Eagles Field. My aunt, the late Anna Borja Young Guerrero, was the administrator to the family's estate. Was one of the defendant named in civil action number thirty four dash fifty, whereby land lot number fifty two seventy four was taken by the United States of Gu- United States government through proceedings in eminent domain after July twenty first nineteen forty four and before August twenty third nineteen sixty, sixty three. The issue of compensation for the US taking of lot number fifty two seventy four was not adjudicated in a contested trial in the District Court of Guam. Upon review of my family's deteriorated documents, which all dated back twelfth day of uh, February nineteen fifty two, in reference to lot number fifty two seventy four, it described hectares of land and the stipulated payment that my, my aunt, uh, Anna Borja Young Guerrero received to be reference to civil number one five forty seven versus twenty two thousand five hundred hectares of land, stipulated payment was thirty six dollars. In civil number three dash forty eight versus twenty two thousand hectares of land, stipulated payment was thirty six dollars. Civil number one dash forty nine versus twenty two thousand hectares of land, stipulated payment was thirty nine dollars. Civil number one dash fifty versus nineteen thousand three hundred eighty one hectares of land, stipulated payment was seventy two dollars. The overall amount that my aunt received for the, the, this property during this um uh, taken was uh, stipulation, was a hundred and eighty three dollars. There was also a um, there was another deteriorating document that I recovered in my files. A letter dated twelve December nineteen fifty two was personally delivered to my aunt Anna. The letter was signed by Ernest, Ernest M. Lit, Rear Admiral of the US Navy, in which he referred to our lot number fifty two seventy four, formerly owned by our family, had, but acquired in its entirety in civil number thirty four fifty was part, as part of the Brady Barigada reservation. It, it stated that our family had recently harvested a crop of corn, which was planted on the premises and notified our family that construction in the area is in progress by representatives of the commanding general, Nineteenth Bombardment Wing, Medium. And that in event of any further planting, the government would assume no responsibility for loss or damage to crops incident to military construction. As you can see from this letter, it was difficult for our ancestors to accept the fact that they no longer had possession of their farmland. The property up there is more of like agricultural zoning. A lot of time it's wet filled. Another deteriorating document dated twenty sixth day of January nineteen fifty five, reference to civil number thirty four dash fifty versus eleven million eight hundred twenty five thousand two hundred sixty three square meters of land, the stipulated payment that my aunt was able to receive was only one thousand two hundred dollars. Overall, one thousand three hundred thirty, three hundred eighty three dollars. My son's pickup is worth more than this, was valued more than this. Based on a letter dated July second, two twenty, two thousand twenty, that was addressed to honorable Louris A. Young Guerrero from the Secretary of the Navy Kenneth Day Redway, the former Nimitz Gulf Course, uh, which is where our lot number fifty two seventy four is supposedly situated at. Must be retained as this parcel provides critical support for aviation training and telecommunications requirements. My family understood this as the reason why our ancestral property is not on the list to be declared excess land. This is also referring to the July tw- second two thousand twenty letter. We are requesting for Governor Lou Young Guerrero to please accept the intention of the Secretary of the Navy Kenneth Day Redway to de- declare excess land it, it condemned from it's, from the eighteen families decades ago at and surrounding Eagles Field in Mangillo. And once it's returned by Congress, comply with public law twenty five dash forty five and return it to the heirs of the pre-condemnation owners or the ancestral landowners.
So does Massey, Mrs. Cruz. There are on Vincent Cabrera and Margarita Flores Cabrera, lots, two five ones, no.
Hello, Madam Speaker.
Oh, yes.
Can you hear me?
Is that Vince Cabrera?
Yes.
Okay, please, yeah, identify.
Okay, my name is Vincent Cabrera. Madam Speaker, Senator Perez, Senator Titegri, Senator Nelson. My name is Vincent Flores Cabrera. I am the son of Margarita Flores Cabrera Pereira, who was a teacher at Price Elementary, a Christian mother, a wife, who is a mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother. She is ninety two years young and who is the original landowner of lot two five one seven. I'm here to give testimony on the land that was mentioned in the media to where the post-new hospital is to be built, lot two five one seven Flores property. Declaration of taking of this lot two five one seven was noted in civil case thirty four dash fifty dated Ju- June twenty ninth nineteen fifty, recorded September twenty eighth nineteen fifty one. In Guam law, on May thirtieth nineteen ninety five, Acting Governor Madeline Z. Berdalio signed into law public law twenty three dash twenty three, and actually created Guam Land Reparations Commission by adding new chapter twenty to Title One, Guam Code annotated. Bill number one twenty eight subsection two thousand two zero zero two states, the goal of the commission is to work for the return of federal properties in Guam that are deemed excess by the commission. Subsection two zero zero four states, it is the policy of the government of Guam that land be returned to the estate that held such proper property prior to con- condemnations of said lands by the federal government. The voting sheet to pass this bill included then Senator Lou Young Guerrero. Land has been returned. On May sixteenth, twenty third, Department of Land Management instrument number eight five one seven nine three, a quick claim deed was issued to my mother under Guam Land Use Plan, GLUP, parcel one AF, a portion of Anderson Air Force Base Communications Annex Number two dash AJKD, which uh, according to one of your maps, it has those uh, that actual number on it. Only a portion of lot two five one seven, which is now two five one seven dash REM dash one, which was two seven, two thousand seven hundred and fifty seven square meters, was returned. Two other lots, two five one seven dash REM dash five and two five one seven REM dash R five have not. Senator Vince, Vicente C. Pennington made this land return possible. A timeline, as reported, the governor of Guam intends to enter the government of Guam into a hundred-year lease to which the Secretary of the Navy intended to declare the land excess. The mention of news should jumpstart the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission to find out how they can proceed and what parcel lot numbers are to be returned. It wasn't that hard to figure out, since the Guam Economic Development Authority in June of twenty nineteen made a report of the potential releaseable federal lands. On August eighth, twenty nineteen, the governor sent a letter to the Secretary of Navy requesting the parcels considered to be excess. On July second, twenty twenty, the Secretary of the Navy responded to her letter, and she, she was shut down on two parcels that she requested for. And from there, I believe, the Flores property and the additional parcels surrounding the Flores property was the next choice, because in his letter, he was pleased in saying that the thirteen parcels from her request have already been transferred or a transfer is progress. If you could look at that, get a report, page number twenty, diagram number sixteen, the Anderson Barigada Annex One and Two, which includes lot two five one seven, the Flores property. It is sad and unfortunate that the governor of Guam, who has the opportunity to discuss these excess lands, the original landowners failed them. I ask that the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission move expeditiously to find these original landowners and their heirs and follow the law. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the, from, for bringing this up to light and for your support to return federal lands to the original landowners. And as we discussed this, I had the lands, I'm having the lands survey, and the property that was returned to us, that we have titled to, from the left of the property two five one seven dash REM dash one, all the way down, it passes Eagles Field. So Eagles Field is on lot two five one seven, there's no doubt. And I will have the actual showing of the markers tomorrow that can can actually prove that this is lot number two five one seven, and it is the Flores property. And so far as how Eagles Field was placed there, I do not know, but it is two five one seven, and it is the Flores property. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mister Cabrera. Mister Cruz, Mister John Cruz.
Okay, okay, I'm Mister John Cruz, John Carrera Cruz. Um, my, my grandfather's Manette. Cruz Cruz, my grandmother is Dolores Pere- uh, Delgado Pereira. And we lived there up till nineteen fifty three, when the federal government took our property and we moved to Tamuning. First of all, thank you, Senator Tenor, I mean, uh, Delahe, and the, and the committee to allow me to sp- to, to speak my thoughts on this hospital relocation. Stealing land from the people, poor people, and building a new hospital, and then putting your name must not be a good idea. I heard rumors this is your plan. Think about karma. It might hurt you down the rest of your life and future family historians of Guam, and might be known to the whole world. Remember, Bank of Guam, First Tomorrow Bank, well-known. While I had got near Bank of Guam, Mangillo Road from Barigada could connect a bridge to the top of the building and, and build uh, the Kenny Heights to the building, top of, of emergency and ambulance only and landing pad for the helicopter to land and heavy emergency. Located in, for the top, on the top floor. Uh, centralized location, main road access already available. Second, uh, already, uh, uh, second place is ITC Building in Tamuning. It's perfect location, Barigada on top of the building, a, a bridge on top of the building to Barigada, and a landing pad for upstairs emergency room. People will remember you and not have a negative effect on your brilliant display brilliantly displayed as I heard to name the hospital. Your name tomorrow will love you and historically, history will and historically, history will flow from that day forward. Properties on Mangilo are only farmers, landowners, original owners, and they are taking away for commercial, for communication tennis, which has no say-so then and now. Governor, I thought if for the people, the government is for the people, not from the people and not this dictatorship, not yet anyway. Seriously, I just can't understand why you're going to build a hospital there when the back road is so, it's dangerous. It's a dead man's road. The roads, the location is bad. The farmers, they need their land back. We like to have the land back instead of just giving it up for the hospital. That's all I have to say. Our property is 90. In fact, I don't even have a record on it because every time I go there, they don't know what's my, they ask me my property number and I don't know. But it's really, really frustrating to know that they're taking the property without no compensation or anything. They just take it. It already been, it happened since the 50s. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cruz. We have one more landowner, Ms. Elsie Flores. Ms. Flores?
Yes, I'm speaking for my father, Henry Tenor Flores. This is the Flores property, the 2517 Eagles Field. Actually, my cousin was on earlier, Vince Cabrera. Anyway, I'll just make it short because they said so much already. I covered just about everything. But I'm a very simple person and I just wanted to know why it's so complicated. I get confused even the map earlier with the director. It's so confusing. Everything's so confusing, okay? So let's just say, and I want this to, I hope that the governor is listening because let's just do this, okay? Governor, we all win when you do this, okay? Why don't we ask the federal or the Navy or whoever was holding the flag to return it back, okay, to the original landowner? And maybe you can lease it from the original landowner and make the original landowner be able to profit from this property, okay? Instead of you just taking it for the hospital and we don't get nothing back. But you know, let me emphasize something to you because all those one people that spoke here, besides Vince and I, let me tell you, how many original landowners are still alive? Do you know that? Does anybody know that? I am not speaking for my, I'm speaking for myself, but for my father, who is and her sister, Vince Cabrera's mother, Mrs. Margarita Cabrera, they are original landowners. They are still alive. They are over 90 years old. They, you should put that in your mind, our original landowners, they should release that land back to them because they rightfully own it. It was taken, the land was taken, whether you like it or not. And what, how much they gave them is not, is not, nothing. It's checking fee. So if it's excess now, give it back to the original landowner. Let the original landowner decide what they want to do with the police for hospital or what, or the Kmart or Target or what. Anyway, you have to think, these two original landowners are still alive. They're over 90 years old. They own this property. They didn't give it to anybody or rented out or what. Since somebody came in and said, take this and not take that. Now they don't need it, give it back to them. They're still alive, Governor. I'm not, I'm not here to speak for myself. I'm going to be gone in a few years, you know? Maybe first my father, these two original landowners are over 90 years old. It'd be nice if you give them back. Let them decide what to do and enjoy their land, their land that was taken away. Whether they liked it or not, they had to give it up, you know? Now that it's an excess, it's a like, tell the military, give it back to them. And then you come in and say, hey, you want to lease it to me for whatever? It'd be nice if you give it back because they're still alive. It's original, not heirs, not other people. And in my stack of papers, when I go through these papers, because I'm not good in these papers and all that. I'm a contractor. I can deal with decoration and all about this paper with technical words and all that. It's very hard to understand something. But I've come down to, I'm a simple person and I look at this paper, then I say, like the Flores property, when they came in, they leased, they gave money and they leased the property. And then a couple of years later, they came back and leased the property again. And then a couple later again, they came back and renewed it. And I have this paper that says renewed, 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 renewed. So if they were leasing it and renewing it every now and then, and at the end, finally, that last renewal was done, shouldn't have been going back to the original landowner if it was being leased and renewed every now and then? I don't understand that part. I really don't. Senator, that's the part I forgot to ask you because I have copies of that. It says 19 so-and-so leased to 1963. Then after 1963, so-and-so, it was renewed again. And then another two years, it was renewed again. So I'm thinking that they're leasing these properties and then every couple of years, they renew it. It's almost like it's not condemned. It's like it was being leased every year. They kept extending it until they don't really, at the end of the final renewal and the lease was up, shouldn't have gone back to the original landowner? The military should have given it back to the original landowner when his renewal was over. I mean, his lease was over. It's like, you know, you rent a house, your renewal was up. You want to rent it again? You renew it, you renew it, you renew it. That's what I'm seeing in this paper and I'm getting all confused. But this is what I want to emphasize to the governor. Governor, give back the original landowners their property, especially the one that are still alive. He sign on, that he man la 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 is near now. That is a, you know, my usasat no. And I emphasize this, that's a big property that we own. And my father said, me as a daughter, I am on land trust. I am on land trust. Can you believe that? A big property that my father owned and here I am leasing land trust because that property cannot be given back to us or having so much problem taking it back. And that's what I really want to emphasize. Original landowner is still alive. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, and happy Thanksgiving. But I hope you put that in your heart that there is original landowners still alive. Thank you, Senator, too. I really appreciate you. I really do. You're the best, okay?
Sisus Massey, Ms. Flores, I really appreciate you coming here and to testify today and all of you original landowners to testify on your family's behalf. I'm going to put up one list that we have. This is not a definite list, of course, based on what we've been talking about today. No one knows the definite list, but hopefully, ancestral lands will be able to give this to us after this hearing now that we've got the documents from land management. So they can overlay these. Whichever agency can do that faster, please do that and let the landowners know which lots are encompassed in the 100 acres so far. These are the lots. If you can make it as big as possible just for those who are viewing. 2290, 91, 92, 93, 94, 96, 2517, 5275, 5276, 5279, 5280 and 81. Not an extensive list. These are, these are the estates that own these properties. And I'm going to show you something after this, but the estates are Ramona Duñez Cruz and Vicente Manjola Cruz, Manuel Cruz Cruz, Francisco Kitigua Tenorio, Anna Lujan Kitigua, Jose Anderson Minor, Angela Cruz Garcia, Henry Tenorio Flores and Margarita Flores Cabrera, the heirs of Justo Garcia, M.C. Cruz, heirs of Ramón Santos Borja and Maria Lujan Borja, Catalina Acavea Camacho, Rosalia Kitigua Tenorio. And if we could go to the next list. So that was a list I obtained from ancestral lands. And ancestral lands also gave us ostensible owners. Now, if you look carefully, these are a more detailed list of, for example, Lot 2291. You see all the lists of owners for 2291 and 225, I mean, 2517. This is not, this does not include all of the lots we just looked at on the prior list, but I just want to show that some of these lots, you know, have also been, I mean, the heirs have been determined. So it goes further than just the big estates that we talked about earlier. I'm not going to read these, but these are all available at the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission for anybody's inquiry. All right, we're going to proceed now. And thank you again to the landowners. You can continue to watch on Zoom or you can continue to stay and watch the rest of the proceedings. Okay, so if I could go back to the Department of Land Management, and we're going to talk about the list of properties that was given to us by the Department of Defense that are categorized as transfers in progress. And this is different than the Eagles Field properties and, you know, the Anderson tracks that we were just talking about because those are designated, not transfers in progress, those are designated eligible for transfer or potential transfer, not transfers in progress. So the first question I want to ask the Department of Land Management is, what do you estimate to be the time difference between going from potential transfer or eligible for transfer to transfer in progress? How long would it take to convert these properties to a transfer in progress? Mr. Borja?
Yes, I wanted to ask, we take a break for a few minutes. I'm incontinent. I just need to pee about five minutes. I'll be right back. Please, it's an inter call and I need a drink of water. I don't mean any disrespect, but I'm 71 years old.
Thank you, Mr. Borja, all right. Please.
Nobody's in the office, but I don't want to wait the chair for tomorrow.
All right, you go take a break.
I'll be back in a few minutes.
Let us know when you're back. In the meantime, we'll be talking with the ancestral commission, ancestral lands commission. Thank you. So thank you again, Mr. Birch and Mr. Cherica Veia, Vice Chair LaGuatia and all the members of the ancestral lands commission. I really appreciate you commissioners being here. So the lands designated as transfers in progress, I read the list earlier and I just wanted to ask you pretty much the same question as I asked you about the Eagles Field properties. These are designated transfers in progress. There's no guarantee this is going to get to the ancestral lands commission right now, right? It's possible that the government of Guam might keep some of these parcels for other uses. And so I guess I just wanted to get your input on if the ancestral lands commission can notify the landowners of the potential return of these properties to the government of Guam so that the landowners can get involved in whether the government of Guam is going to keep these properties or return them via the ancestral lands commission? You know, I know, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Madam Speaker, what we did today was we cut a purchase order. Hopefully, we'll get that through GSA to place an ad out in the paper. That's our intention of doing that. I figured that'd be the quickest way for us to notify these people of the transfer in progress and potential transfers is to place an ad. So we started that earlier this morning. So hopefully, we'll get through GSA and have that available soon.
Well, I appreciate that. That will, okay, so great. So the goal of that is to let the landowners know that it's their parcels, you have lot numbers. So for example, it says like Tengißen Beach Park. Are you able to convert that to lot numbers? The USO beach park.
Ask my land agent.
Okay.
Joey, are we able to do that?
Senator, I'm sorry, but if we're going to do this, why are we just limiting to this, these areas? Why don't we just tell everybody who has a claim to file a claim? Why are we just limiting to these areas? Again, everybody's entitled, right, by law?
Well, these are the transfers in progress. So these are the ones that are coming to us soonest. Pardon?
Those are not guaranteed transfers. So, you know, save everybody a step.
I don't.
Whoever's going to have that order, file a claim with us. Just leave it at that.
Well, there's no claim to file with you if the property doesn't get to the ancestral lands commission. If the government of Guam keeps the property after it's returned by the government, the federal government, there's no claim to file with you. That's the issue. So, yeah.
Until the deed is transferred to us, exactly. That was our point. Until the land is returned, why file a claim with us? But you want them to file a claim whether it's earned or not. So let's just invite all landowners, not just, you know, radio Baragada or why don't we invite all landowners to file a claim? And hopefully, then they can convince the military to release even more land. You know.
I'm sure that that is available. If you think you can accept claims for land that's not yet returned, then fine. You know, the law right now says you accept claims for land that's returned. I'm asking if we can just notify those on the list of transfers in progress. These are the lands that supposedly are going to be returned in 2022. That means, you know, after December, so.
Supposedly, it's not guaranteed, Senator. We don't know if it's an environmental concern. We don't know if they're going to actually return it. We don't know until those environmental studies are done, historical surveys are done. So why not just have everybody file? You know, invite everybody.
You can do that, but that doesn't inform them of who is on the transfer in progress list. That's my goal. Mr. Acavea, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
All right. What are your thoughts? Do you believe this is something that ancestral lands then should not be involved in? I'm getting mixed messages from you guys, I have to say, because at the last April hearing, it seemed like everyone was on the same page. We're going to notify these landowners. Since then, it looks like we were not able to do that. We were short-staffed. There were all kinds of reasons. We're not able to notify these landowners. It's not your job. And now, Mr. Birch is offering to put out an ad and notify. And, you know, I don't know if there's some tension or what, but what would you say, Mr. Acavea? I mean, what is the ancestral lands commission able to do? And I'm looking at you because there is no one else. That's really why.
Well, I think our land agent is just, you know, making a suggestion, but as far as I'm concerned, yes, I would like to preliminary inform directly the landowners of these particular lots that are, you know, potential to be released. But, you know, he's right. We don't, we're not sure. I think we need to be prudent to, you know, let them know that these are just, you know, potential releases. You know, they're eligible. It could take 10 years, 15 years. We don't know. It took a long time for the, you know, these excess properties for since the early 70s, I believe. And then we just started, you know, returning them back in the, what, the 90s or late, early 2000s. So, no, I'm in full support of just letting them know So, no, I'm in full support of just letting them know these lands are, you know, contacting them directly or with the ad that the director's saying. And yes, get them, you know, give them notice as opposed to just, you know, saying file a claim. But, you know, I respect Joey's opinion. He's our land agent. He's very good. You know, I respect him a lot. He's very good. But that's my opinion is, and my thoughts, we should let them know that these lands are potential to be, you know, potential to be released.
All right, thank you. And I respect Mr. Longgrove's work. He's really been carrying this commission for many years.
He's excellent. He's excellent.
Let me just give you an example of what, why I'm concerned. So maybe this will make more sense to any of you who have any questions. One of those on the list of transfers in progress is the USO Beach Park. I have already heard here in my office that one of the mayors has plans for these parks and is asking that it be given to him as, you know, government use. I've been told that veterans are asking that it be given to veterans organizations for public use. I want to know, is there a part of this USO Beach Park that is, does not have original landowners? Or is, are there original landowners that should also be part of this advocacy for, you know, what will be done with that land? So that's what I'm saying. If the landowners know, they can be involved because other people are involved in what's going to happen to land that gets returned. And I think it's only fair if the original landowners are given an opportunity to be involved. And that starts with just notifying them. That's our only goal here. I don't expect you to do, you know, more than that unless you take it on yourselves to advocate. Okay, so just to refresh everyone's memory, parcel C of Marble Cave, Tengiisan Beach Park, Tengiisan Power Plant, ACEORP Maui Tunnel, USO Beach Park, PD Power Plant and Substation, Agania Diesel Power Plant, Lot 603-1, Apur Heights, or Lot 402-1. Okay, I see Mr. Borja is back. Mr. Borja?
Yep, I'm back. Wash my hands and I'm ready to go for the purpose of the oversight hearing.
Thank you.
On the ancestral lands commission and the Guam Department of Land Management. Status of future or pending transfers, deeds, leases or licenses between the government of Guam and the federal government or DOD.
All right.
Agenda, status update for the transfer.
Mr. Borja, yes, can you just confirm how long do you estimate the list of potential transfers or eligible for transfer can convert to a transfer in progress? In your experience, how long are we looking at? Because the Eagles Field are potential transfers, they're not transfers in progress.
No estimate. Each portion, actually parcel, is unique in itself, Madam Speaker. And I'll tell you right now that delays in returning these parcels is all on land management. Because land management's responsibility in this return process is that title five, the Lieutenant Governor's Environmental Review Committee, where land management, Attorney General's Office, and the Guam Environmental Protection Agency have various responsibilities and obligations. For land management in that process, our obligation is to authenticate and evaluate the return process. And I've done completely the lots or the parcels that you listed in your letter to me and I'm ready to present that. But insofar as the timeframe, very varied. Let's just say that these parcels that are on your list is from Galap 77. These parcels were first identified for return in 1977. Let me repeat that, 1977. Today is 2021. Subtraction, I don't know, at least 30 years.
All right.
For this parcel, for this back.
All right, the parcels on my list come from the Secretary of the Navy's list. If we could put that up. Sorry.
I have that list, Madam Speaker. I'm ready just to go, you know, parcel by parcel.
Yes, I'm going to put the list up. I just want to show that this is a list from the Secretary of the Navy and the Secretary of the Navy has listed the anticipated transfer dates to be 2022 to 2026. So, yes, we're down the list and I'd like to know, in particular, if you are aware of any use that these properties are slated for? In other words, is the government of Guam intending to keep these properties after they're returned? Sorry, can you turn that list? Thank you.
If you don't mind, Madam Speaker, I'll go by the list you gave me. That's the research that I've done. I did specifically on those lists.
Okay.
I basically cut, yeah, I kind of paste it from your notice.
All right, we'll do that. If we can make this bigger, just to show, just to show the category, transfers in progress. You see the column towards the right-hand side? Can we make it bigger, please? Right-hand side. Here we go. So some lots, and we're only going to talk now about the ones that are designated transfers in progress and the anticipated transfer dates for all of these that I have listed are 2022 to 2026, according to the Secretary of the Navy's listing. Okay, and so you want to go in your order, Mr. Borja? We can do that.
Yes, I want to go in my order and in the list that you provided me. As you can see, that presentation you put up on the screen is quite substantial. I did not, you know, prepare everything for all of those.
Only the transfers in progress is what I asked you.
Well, I only prepared for, and let's just go down the list. PD Power Plant and Substation, the status for that transfer is best obtained from GPA. My understanding on the PD Power Plant and Substation, which is probably the island-wide power system, is that it's still under license. And again, the confirmation of that information should come from GPA. So for that first parcel, I believe that's still under an island-wide power system license. In other words, I don't believe the GPA government of Guam owns the power systems yet. They're operating under license. But again, information is best obtained from GPA themselves on that particular transfer. And that also goes with the next parcel, which is the Agania Diesel Power Plant. I'm assuming that this one is the one over there actually in Mongong, which has some environmental issues. And, you know, reviewing these parcels that you put up, actually it's important that we evaluate and authenticate, you know, the responsibility of the Department of Land Management on these particular things. Thank you for mentioning, though, at the beginning of your, the hearing, thank you for mentioning the possibility of confusion on acreage and parcel identifiers. It's critical that we know the common lot identifier, you know, its progression and it's more for its evaluation, evolution. For example, parcel C of Marble Cave, you have to be careful that you don't say that that parcel C of Marble Cave is parcel C in Marbu, in the Marble Base Command space. Because marble area, and I hope everybody knows what marble means, is actually a Marble Base Command A, Marble Base Command B, and a Marble Base Command C. Marble Base Command C is the 395 acres that belongs to the ancestral land and I believe have been returned to the ancestral land. But the parcel here that says parcel C Marble Cave, five acres, that's actually the sewer facility down there that the military put and it's accompanying easements to that facility. So it's actually on the bottom of the cliff in that particular one parcel C, Marble Cave. So there is a Marble Base Command parcel C, but that's the 395 acres on the top of the cliff. This five acres is at the bottom of the cliff and it's accompanying easement to a sewer processing facility at the bottom of the, at the bottom of the cliff there. Now, I don't have any information on the status of that. I know the governor requested for it, but I don't see any movement from the military side in terms of paperwork or something needing an environmental committee review under the Lieutenant Governor to do this, to do this particular parcel. So that's the, you know, so that's the first two parcels, PD Power Plant and Substation. I'm assuming that that refers to the island-wide power system that includes not only substations, but includes the access easements. Some of you may notice those big power lines going across Nimitz Field. Well, those power lines and those easements on those power lines actually still belong to the Navy and GovGuam is operating it up, GPA, under license. And I know that's been a problem for some of the landowners in that area that easements. Okay, so that's the two. The third one there, Lot 603-1, Apur Heights, also known as Lot 402-1, that's part of Lot 402, a huge piece of property down there. That, I believe, has been transferred directly to GPA. This is infrastructure. I believe it's a substation over there in Apur Heights. For some of you that may be familiar, coming in at Payless and going up the road towards Apur Heights, the road splits, turn right, you go over to Naval Majesty, you turn left, it takes you to Cross Island Road, that triangle right at the diversion. That's the, that's this site, Lot 402-1, also known as Lot 603-1. And thank you for bringing up that identifier, you know, that some of these parcels, some of these dirt, some of these lands that may be known by two different names or could be misunderstood as to exactly which parcel, which dirt, which soil, which land we're talking about. The next one on the list, of course, is parcel C Marble Cave. And maybe for next public hearing, everybody can bring along like, maybe a little test. What does marble mean? You know, as opposed to poggadish. Okay, parcel C, Tengiisan Beach. Tengiisan Beach is Galap 77, 1977 parcel identified for return. And we have done, land management has done its work on this particular parcel, evaluating it and authenticating it. And this is what we find for this particular parcel. Give me a chance just to look at my notes. And I apologize, for the last several months, I've just been dealing with notes. Things are happening so fast, you know, with getting these lands back. After much, much inactivity, the last, you know, 10 years, I guess, the last administration, there wasn't really much activity in getting some of these lands back. And only when this administration came in in 2019 was a concerted effort made to, you know, get the status of these things that were supposed to be returned, but haven't been done so. The Tengiisan parcel is a, let me set that down here. Okay, here we go, the Tengiisan parcel. The Tengiisan parcel, beach lot parcel, is one of several Tengiisan parcels. This parcel was acquired through a negotiated sale. So it was not condemned. It was actually negotiated sale. The military approached the original landowners, they were interested in buying your property. The original landowners say, okay, this is my price. They consummated the sale and, you know, that's what happened in one of those parcels. Now, there are actually two parcels in this area known as Tengiisan Beach. One parcel is the, is the actual beach itself. And this is the parcel I've been processing. This is the parcel that I'm, I'm reviewing. The other parcel is actually the power plant. And those, again, that one is also in the transfer in progress. There is a question about the contamination that is on there. You know, who made it? Who's going to clean it up? You know, and EPA is very stringent on making sure that that parcel, portion or parcel is cleaned up before GovGuam returns it back. So that's the status of the power plant parcel. But the Tengiisan beach parcel is set back to return. My recommendation to the governor for this particular one is keep it as a public beach. Military is returning it back to the people of Guam. This parcel was actually purchased. It was in condemned. I would recommend to the governor that this particular parcel was made a public beach for use by the people of Guam. So that's the Tengiisan Beach parcel. And these lots that are listed here, these parcels that are listed here are actually the public benefit releases. These are releases to the people of Guam, including a Tengiisan Beach and some of these other parcels. Once we review and we evaluate the particular ones. The next one that we are looking at is ACEORP Maui Tunnel. Does anybody know what that is? Does anybody even know what the word ACEORP means? I'm assuming no, but what this is really, the correct name of this parcel really is the ACEORP Maui Well and Tunnel parcel. That's kind of like the formal name. ACEORP stands for Automotive Construction Engineering Operations Repair Plan. What does that long word mean? They're fixing things. They're fixing heavy equipment. They're messing around with oil. They're messing around with brake fluid, transmission fluid, potential for contamination. And then also, does anybody know what the word Maui well is? What's a Maui well? Well, a Maui well is a well that operates by streaming underground fresh water from the thin basil layer. In other words, this water doesn't go down to the ochofer where we pump it up. It's almost a horizontal well where there's a higher elevation property and that collects water. It comes down maybe in front of a cliff. You drill into that cliff and get that water coming down. That's a Maui well. You know, they call it a Maui well. There are two Maui wells in Guam. One is in Tumon. This one is in Samooning. This one is behind the Mobile Gas Station in Samooning. It's actually, I can see it actually from my office here. It's back there for you younger folks that may know the Tezca Door nightclub and for you older folks that may need to know where the cop fight used to be, the cockpit used to be. That's the area, it's kind of like along this area. And so that's where this parcel is.
Is there a government agency that is intending to use that?
Yes, and that's coming down to the next part of my report. The government agency, GWA, has submitted an interest in a portion of the parcel. The actual well is actually into the side of the cliff, but waterworks need access to the property and access to the tunnel. Now, I was beginning to say that of the two Maui wells we have in Guam, both of them are contaminated. My understanding is that the Tumon Maui well was shut down for chemical contamination and this one, you know, coming up from the airport could be contaminated. But that, that lane is EPA's lane. I just mentioned that because I know that for a fact, but you want to get confirmation for that? That's EPA's lane on that. They specifically identified GWA an interest in the property and a reason of necessity to gain access to the, to the tunnel. This parcel was originally a portion of basic lot 2110, which lot actually spreads over two parcels that are looked at being transferred. The other parcel where basic lot 2110 is involved on is the Samooning Telephone Exchange parcel, which is right in front of it. That parcel was returned several years ago. Might even be a decade ago. Might even be when I had black hair. But in any event, the reason why that area is not developed is the family is having probate issues, you know, dividing that, I don't know, two acres of property among tens of owners. And as you can see, for some of you that may be traveling down in Samooning recently, you know, that trip is being developed from the ICC building. Right next to us is the temple, very nice, has been developed. Down the road, we have the tire company that may be looking to put its operations there. Uh down the road, uh we have the tire company that may be looking to uh uh put its operations there. Uh Taco Bell shut down, of course, uh but I expect that after the temple's done, there will be something done of that property. And then further down, uh past uh past National Office of Supplies, uh we have uh a new business that's gone into there renting out uh uh electric scooters, which I need to talk to the legislature about some Tony issue there. But uh but down the line, it's the Japanese, uh the Japanese uh 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 fast food and Jack in the Box. And I say this thing, Senator, because when we evaluate these land returns, we also like to know what's going around us with the private landowners. Uh so that when these agencies request for these properties or the government thinks of retaining it, you know, uh for a specific public use purpose, we want to know what's around this particular parcel. As you've seen the other parcels that I've I've gone to uh, you know, I've 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 gone uh and done review uh on that particular piece. The next parcel that I have here on the list in the order that uh you presented is the uh USO Beach Park. And this is again a collapsed seventy seven parcel, was identified in nineteen seventy seven uh to be transferred to Governor Guam and uh here we are today. Uh actually, uh the map has been signed for the parcel uh coming back. And uh you know, now we have a definite boundary of what's coming back. We also know uh you know, how mu- how many acres we uh uh we are looking at that particular piece of property. And uh in this particular process review, unlike the review we did for the Eagles Field, I don't even like to call it Eagles Field, in the proposed medical complex, you know, that that's not Eagles Field. Eagles Field is a little corner in the in of this whole project up there. And uh let's call it something, let's call it land or uh track, eighteen through eight. But in any event, uh you know, so you know, so we do these reviews for this particular process. The reason why land management was involved in the review of these parcels, other than the ones uh the PD Power Plant one, uh which we are also in uh involved in that process, but it's basically to uh to do the seizure protection review, uh you know, uh on that rather than uh rather than a return process review. And then for these particular ones on your list that I'm uh talking about now, uh this uh land management was required to review this, uh you know, evaluate this uh for advice to the lieutenant governor, uh to the State Clearing House and to the governor, you know, on these uh on on these properties. Uh for uh Hoover Beach Park, whatever we call it, and I believe Hoover wasn't a good president, if I understand it, a little bit of history. Maybe we should change the name. The actual name of that is Aphra Harbor Reservation Beach. That's kind of like the technical name for that. We call it Hoover Park and we call it USO Beach Park. And uh we call it uh like that. This parcel is prime recreational beach location. But a little bit of history on this parcel. There was a time when civilian, especially, I guess, the more civilians or Guatemian civilians, could not go to USO Beach Park. You had to be military and then later on you have to be in the uh seaman service uh, you know, uh service to be uh uh to be allowed in there. And of course, that has changed drastically. So when that uh issue came up, where locals, civilians weren't allowed into USO Beach Park, uh the people of PD were complaining and even the mayor of PD was complaining at that, but hey, PD, beachfront community, we don't have a beach. So the military returned property way back when, I can bring up what year it was, for a beach park right next to USO Beach. The Santos Memorial Park down there, original landowner land, returned to the government of Guam, whereby government Guam immediately proceeded to declare it a beach park under the jurisdiction now of the PD mayor. And uh when you were saying uh uh people or uh entities that were interested in a USO beach park, uh you forgot to leave out UOG. UOG wants that uh uh property uh over there for a uh uh I don't know, some sort of a study center or something and like that. So they're also one of the uh uh parties that have interest in that property. And in this particular parcel, we also look to see uh how many uh original land lots are in there and uh how many uh original landowners are maybe there. And when we say original landowners, we actually go by the nineteen forty one tax rule. And going by the ninety one uh uh nineteen forty one tax rule, I apologize for that. Uh it is kind of dangerous because of course, most of those people are probably not alive today and there might be two, maybe three generations from them. So for each single landowner, uh you might multiply it, but uh they may have had four kids and each of those four kids uh uh may have had now four grandchildren. So the uh number of owners to the property, of course, uh rises exponentially as time goes on. And this is no different uh on them. In our research, uh let me see if I can take my notes here.
Do you have a a list of names that you found so far?
Uh yes, I do, Madam Speaker. It is part of our process, our review process. And uh we found that in that in that uh four acre parcel, four plus acre parcel.
Five point five.
There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. Twenty-two lots in that four acre parcel. And of those twenty-two lots, there are twenty-eight owners, I believe. Yeah, twenty-eight owners. So as you can see, uh it might not be a good uh, you know, thing for development. Uh in in other words, uh so if this property was to be returned to the original landowners, uh which you probably couldn't under Public Law one oh six five oh four, uh you would be dealing with uh a twenty-two lots. Uh probably all of them less than, I'd probably say less than a half, half acre uh on there. And we haven't, we haven't researched as to uh, you know, uh the sizes of these lots. Uh and we can certainly do that, uh but we were just uh uh overwhelmed by the number of lots in that four acre parcel. And keeping in mind again, uh yes, they are original landowners here. Uh but right next door was property that the mill returned for public benefit, for public use, for the people of Guam, which is the Santos Memorial Park. And these are public benefits, uh you know, public benefit uh uh transfers. These are not uh transferred to a individual, you know, landowner and like that. These these transfers are for the people of Guam. These are infrastructure. Uh this is an infrastructure.
Mr. Bor, can you, can you just clarify, uh the list from the Navy says five point five acres and you're talking about four acres. Yeah, what's the difference?
Uh there are some easements that were reserved in there by by the Navy. I, yeah, they say five point five. I think it came out to something like nineteen thousand uh five hundred seventy-six square meters and divide that by uh four thousand uh square meters per acre. Uh that comes out to about uh a little bit less than five uh acres. But the actual survey, like I said, the map uh uh I think was just approved uh maybe about last week.
All right.
Yeah, came down, you know, with the easements involved in it and and like that, uh you know, it it came out. There certainly is a lot of interest in the property. And I really don't envy the governor making a decision, but this is a public benefit that transfer, you know, for the people of Guam.
All right. So you've you've heard about uh uh keeping it for public benefit or the veterans or the PD mayor or UOG. And of course, you 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 researched the landowners and you've done a map. Are you able to make the the list of landowners and the map available?
Uh yes, yes we can, yes we can. And uh and like I said, the map was just approved uh a couple of days ago. That's why I was very happy when you made your opening statement and you made something uh, you know, said something about the federal government uh, you know, uh getting it uh getting on the uh people of Guam's uh, you know, the private landowners thing. And then as well as the island in the whole, you know, because uh those takings not only affected uh not only affected individual landowners, you know, they affected the island of Guam. And and hopefully, some of these returns of this infrastructure and like that will also benefit, you know, the entire the people of Guam. And as you can tell, you know, uh when you read your opening statement, there there are exceptions to these land transfers uh on it. And we have to be very careful and and evaluate these things because the Ancestral Lands Commission has made two very, very, very serious mistakes in returning these lands. And I don't mind saying it uh here now uh with the commission members on board because some of the commission members that are on board were commission members uh from the previous administration uh and like that. And the two very, very serious mistakes I believe that they made was the Tijan Parkway Return and the Northern uh Wastewater Treatment Plan. And and that's another, another issue uh uh speaker. But let me get down to the, go down the list. But yes, we have a map approved of this particular portion. Now, it's not an overlay map, okay? The map that we got approved is a map of the parcel to be returned. That's one more step. You know, and uh maybe give uh ancestral lands a little bit, uh you know, similar job to do, do the overlay on it. You know, they're certainly capable office, but they certainly do need help uh because there are kind of a lot of lands being transferred back and uh and those guys need help there. I was a former director there and uh worked with Mr. Leon Guerrero. He is a very good researcher. But uh there are only so many hours in the day and uh when I came back to government service, uh I think the first thing Mr. Leon Guerrero was gonna do was retire, I think. So you gotta get him while he's there. But that's that's for Hoover Park. Are there original landowners in there? Yeah. Nineteen forty-one, there was twenty-eight. Are there original landowner lots in there? Yeah. Twenty-two lots, uh and I can't, I don't believe that any one of them uh uh are more than a half acre. When we transmit that letters of the list of the lots involved on it, I also want to include the lot size uh that you do in there. Uh you know, that for each of those particular parcels to get a little bit of uh, you know, a context of this land return, you know, and uh and the sizes that we have returned. Of course, it's nothing like the land return that was up at the up at the Regi Berry Garden with the Ancestral Lands Commission, which was, you know, two hundred and fifty-two acres, I believe, up there. Okay, so the USO Park, uh yeah, I think one of the first things that you do is uh conduct the Underwood and his group to rename that thing then from Hoover.
Okay, I appreciate that, uh Mr. Bor, Director.
I'm sorry, I apologize for that comment.
No problem. I appreciate your your thorough report on all of these properties. That that exhausts my list of the transfers in progress. Do you have any other transfers in progress that are not, that we've not talked about?
You know, and I'm glad you used the word transfer because we are also looking, of course, at obtaining a license, eventually a long-term license or lease. Uh there are other people uh above my trade grade that uh besides that. But I'm also ready to provide a status update of how we came to uh to Manila uh to do the uh site there. It may take me uh an hour and a half.
A different hearing, that's a kind of the question of, you know, where to locate the hospital. But if I could just ask you, is there any other property that we've talked about, transfers in progress or potential transfer, where you're looking at a lease or license prior to the transfer? Besides.
Not not that I know, Senator, uh Speaker, Madam Speaker. And uh I I did, you know, press my situation there in the beginning where these actually returned requests for returns are actually generated by uh Duda advising the governor, hey, you know, let's uh take this back. We don't think the Navy needs this. Or let's take this back, uh we need it for uh, you know, we need it for a side, yeah. But I know that I'm not, yeah. And I'm not on that list. I'm not in that process, uh uh Madam Governor, uh Madam Speaker. I'm not in that process, uh you know, like I said, uh do you still uh
Finding the other lots, okay.
Right, come from Duda.
All right. What about the um uh the, for example, USO, how much longer do you think before it's actually transferred?
Uh, you know, I I'd hesitate to give a to give a date of time because it's not within my power, uh uh Madam Speaker. Uh I do know that this last batch actually was delayed uh by land management because uh I insisted on a detailed evaluation, a detailed uh authentication, which was never done before according to the staff of land management. Uh you know, why, why, why are we doing this? Uh it's never been done before. And just to let you know, throughout the years, there's about a hundred different parcels that have been returned uh to the government of Guam for public benefit use, you know, ranging from uh cemetery to uh oh, you know, the the roads themselves, those are all a public benefit transfer.
Thank you. Yes, I understand. That's the issue. That's one of the issues that Ancestral Lands Commission is facing. It's one of the overwhelming issues that they face and that's because for a lot of those transfers back to the government of Guam, where the government kept it for uh continuing public use, they are now, you know, uh kind of uh uh it's their duty now to to use.
I agree, Madam Speaker.
Compensate those those landowners. And so that's, that's why we are trying to keep a close, a close cu- close eye on all of this.
And I and I just, uh you know, and I'm so glad, uh Madam Speaker, that the uh the governor, uh the big Mr. Bird to get on here and Mr. Leon Guerrero. I'm also very appreciative of former uh director of the Ancestral Lands Commission, uh Mr. John Goko, who actually got the five million dollars on AT&amp;T to add to the land bank, you know. Uh one of the very, very positive things about this land bank, this has got seven, fifteen million dollars in it. Uh Ma- Madam Speaker, uh that's more than land management's budget and it's been in there for a long time.
Also very many landowners. So when they calculate it out, it's only cents for each of them. So, you know, they they that thirteen million might look like a lot, but it's not when you, when you, we think about all the, all the property owners that they have to compensate.
And and that's true.
Again, and I'm going to ask, yeah, I'm gonna ask.
The uh, if you look at the uh the bond land plan spaces, the entire case was thirty-six and a half million dollars. So at least this one is one-third of that already. But uh for the life of me, I couldn't tell why they never uh started, you know, the last administration. How come you didn't start passing out that money as Mrs. Flores said, uh you know, while people are still living?
That's right. They're working on it and we're working on transfers of land as well. This like, uh they could ask, why hasn't this transfer been occurring, you know, prior to now?
Yeah, I know.
Now ask, I'm gonna now uh give the floor to Senator Tai Chukwe uh for any questions she might have of any of the panel. Senator Tai Chukwe, you're recognized.
Uh thank you, Madam Speaker. And and to those who came and testified earlier, I'd like to thank you for coming forward and providing your testimony. It it becomes very um, you know, uh sentimental, not sentimental, passionate, you know, especially when land is taken away. Um it it means more than just money, you know, it's it's identifying the family, who they are, where they, where they came from. So I I greatly appreciate them coming forward and testifying. Uh it is a great concern of mine too, particularly in this area, um with the intention of the hospital. Um, Mr. Bor, is it still the intent of um ancestral lands and Department of Land Management to um combine, uh uh you know, basically to consolidate the two agencies together?
No, not that I know of. Uh not that I know of, and that's basically a policy decision. But uh I would recommend that the legislature take a hard look at the inventory because in order to qualify for a tomorrow land trust, you would be dependent on the Ancestral Lands Commission. And I don't know records. And I don't know if you misspoke about land management and ancestral land uh commission getting together. Uh I haven't heard that. Uh you know, my uh thing when I came in here to work for this administration was to separate the three agencies and not necessarily uh uh keep the combination together.
I see. Mr. Bor.
I haven't heard, I haven't heard anything about any consolidation.
Okay, so your intention basically and your your perspective is is keeping that uh separate then, to keep all three separate? Land management, more land trust and ancestral. Um what does, how does uh BSP, uh the Bureau's Planning Coastal Zone Management uh play a role um in in identifying these surplus excess properties?
Uh not that they file a uh Not that they file a, not that they, they identify these excess properties, I don't know that they do. I think BSP's coastal zone management involvement here is that any time you're going to do a project that concerns federal funds or federal money, you have to get clearance from a BSP that it's not gonna impact the coastal zone. I, I think that's where they come in. I don't think they identify properties, although our Bureau for Statistics and Plans probably has the most robust GIS system, which, you know, is capable, hopefully, of overlaying these maps. You know, here at land management, we don't really deal with maps that, you know, involve overlaying, except for planning purposes. But the maps we deal with are, you know, the boring ones, the black and white lines, you know, not necessarily those other kinds of maps.
Okay, Director John, you, has, has the agency already incorporated their rules and regulations? I don't know why, I'm trying to remember if you've already gone through that whole process of putting those regs together.
Yes, Senator, ancestral lands did create rules and regulations back in two thousand sixteen and seventeen, but it was rejected by the Attorney General's Office. And we submitted to the legislature rules or amendments to the current Enabling Act to include what the commissioners at that time wanted to include. And it, the major issue was the extinguishment of claims and beneficiaries to the land bank trust. What the commissioners back at that time wanted to do was to expand the beneficiaries of land bank, of the land bank trust beyond what current law allows for. They wanted to include all those people, all the ancestral landowners who were dispossessed by the, by the land takings of the federal government, whether it be from nineteen thirty all the way up until, I guess, sometime in the nineteen sixties. But the current law does not allow for that. The current law defines government as being the government of Guam. And the Enabling Act pretty much states that then that the beneficiaries are those people whose properties were taken by the federal government or condemned by it during the period of nineteen thirty-two to, to this time and was kept for continued public benefit. That's the, the legal interpretation of that. But the, the commissioners disagree with that. They felt that it was important to include everyone, those whose properties were taken in the Fena area, those at knit camps, those up at Anderson and so on, and not just those that have been returned. So we're looking at that closely now and, and we simply want to try to take care of the original landowners and heirs who are still alive. And, and so if we have to compromise perhaps, maybe that's what we're, we're looking at when drafting the new rules and regulations to remain within the law, what the law provides. And that would limit the amount of beneficiaries to the land bank. But I'd like to advise you that our, many of our commissioners would disagree with that. They would prefer that the legislature take, take this up and amend the law as written to include the others.
I see.
So that, that's the major issue. So yes, the answer to, to your question is yes, it has and was developed. It was rejected, we submitted it twice to the Guam Legislature. We haven't gotten a response on it. So now we're looking at perhaps trying to work and come up with a new set of rules and regulations that perhaps could be accepted as it is passed within the law and maybe with minor change, amendments, I mean, to the current Enabling Act, something that could work for everyone.
Okay, and?
But that's in process right now.
Okay, and what is your timeline to present?
That's a major problem. I'm hoping that if I don't get any other interference, because the person working on that will be me.
Yes.
And there's only one of me and I only have one land agent. And one, right now, we're in the middle of the annual audit. We just responded over two, for two FOIAs just last week alone. Our land agent was out with the coronavirus for a couple of weeks, so we were short in staff. My special projects coordinator, she, her, one member and her family needed critical help and was hospitalized, so she was out for a while. So we're just, we're down to one person running the office, that was myself. So it's kind of hard responding to and preparing for the oversight hearing, handling the, the ongoing audit and responding to a couple of FOIAs in one week or two since we got this notice for us to push forward on other issues. So I'm hoping that I could get that done sometime during the first quarter of next calendar year, around January. So I'm hoping to do that if I get the time. Because every time I start working on it, something tends to push it back. And of course, the commissioners want to see what can be done with that. And that, that's one of the major things that I am working on. But that means there's only one person here. And I'd like you to be aware that the concern I have is that the personnel working here and the staff, their time here could be limited. Potentially, you could have new staff in here within a year or so. We only have one classified employee who's up for, or qualifies for retirement very soon. He's under the ODB program, and we have two unclassified employees here. So it potentially, within a year or less or so, you could have a new group in here who will have to relearn the whole system. When I came in, we had basically no office. Ancestral lands had only one employee, which is Joey Leon Guerrero, and he's been the single employee that's been around here for the longest time. And from what I gather from reading and researching the records, the reason why ancestral lands and tomorrow land trusts were separated from the Department of Land Management was the priority that was given to the, to the two agencies or the two commissions when they were under one, one agency. And because as far as I can see from the ancestral lands commission during the last administration, it was severely neglected. To be honest with you, the files I have, many of the files, the John Bond files are eaten by termites. We're trying to reconstruct them. The ancestral lands was pushed back into a corner of Department of Land Management. And many times, they were pretty much forgotten. And so we're trying to recreate that, we're trying to save what we have by digitizing it. And we're cleaning out the thirty-two or so four and five-door file cabinets that are filled with these items that are very, very important to us. These are the, the materials that people ask for when they come in here. They want to go back and see the, the records of John Bonds, the title hearings and so on. And I do not want that to be lost. So we've applied and we're applying for a TAP grant through BSP. We've gotten some money that I hope could help us out with that. It's very minimal, we, to save the files and, and protect the staff from getting sick again of coronavirus. And so we got another grant from the American Rescue Plan, but it's minimal. It's only seventy-three thousand dollars. The money that we get, we're not on the taxpayer roll, we're on special funds. We raise the funds that keep our agency running. And right now, our budget, which is four hundred thousand, four hundred eight thousand, limits us to the amount of staff we have. Hopefully, after the first quarter or so, where I will be able to hire another land agent to make sure that we have some continuity in this agency for the future. So yeah, when you ask me, are we gonna do this? If I had more staff, the answer would be, that'll be number one priority. But because our staff is limited, we have priorities like the audits, the FOIAs, and the closing, opening of the fiscal years and such. And somebody has to create the budget plan and budget projections. And that's, that ties up a lot of time with individuals here. So I'm just saying that if our budget were to be increased, where I could at least hire two more people, we can get this job done a whole lot quicker. That'll be the bare minimum. Because when I do lose one person in here, I lose a whole bunch of opportunities to get the job done. So when I lost my land agent for two weeks, that was a severe blow for us in trying to gather the information that was being requested for this oversight hearing. We were able to accomplish it, but I kept saying and reporting to the, the speaker's office that give us time because we're working on it and it's taking time, simply because we just don't have the people in here to do the work. We are a bare minimum, everybody works. And like right now, I have Joey, he's still here in the office, he's extremely loyal. Of course, he's tired, he's been working hard to get us the information. We have Kathy Bloss, she's also online. That's a hundred percent participation with the staff. And I'm very happy that our commissioners are here to show their support for us because we support them. But we need the support from the legislature to please increase our budget so we can get the people and get the job done. There are people out there that need our support, we know what we have to do. There are just not enough hours in the day for us to accomplish that.
Okay, thank, thank you, John, for that. And I didn't, I didn't want to linger too much on something that we know that you, you have difficulty in. I mean, most agencies do, you know, it's the common, you know, call out for additional staff, additional help, shorthanded. And I know you're doing everything you can right now. And so, you know, I think the arc of funding would help tremendously to your department and agency. And it's a matter of asking your, your governor to provide more than seventy-three thousand dollars for you. But anyways, I don't want to linger too much because we're here about the, the property and identification of the. You know, that's, that's what this, I think we can have another oversight on that, John, and, and talk about. And I'll, I'll do my best to try and look for some funding for your agency as well.
Thank you.
I know the need is there. The last thing, once you've identified these properties, does government Guam, or, who has the responsibility for the environmental liabilities of, of these parcels and property that are being transferred, first recognized and then being transferred? Who, on the environmental side, is it the federal government or is it Guam?
That's something, again, that is beyond the ability of, of, of this agency. I believe that that should be higher, handled at a higher level before these properties are returned, like the Tangiisan Power Plant. We know that area is severely contaminated. And the big argument there is that if it's returned to GPA, does GPA now assume their liability for the contamination? And I'm assuming that they would claim that because it occurred during the federal government's ownership of it, that it would be their liability. So that's at another level beyond where I'm at. I'm not at that, I'm not in that clearinghouse for that, for the environmental process.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for indulging me and allowing me a few questions regarding this. Trying to find a, a way to assist ancestral lands and, and to do their, their, their job, the responsibility that they have to the people of Guam and returning their lands, identifying it, you know, turning it over in a, in a very, well, clean and good environment, you know, sending it back. But I really appreciate the opportunity. Again, thank you, everyone, for sticking around this long. You know, it's a very important subject matter, especially on Eagles Field. There's a lot of questions that the public want to hear, and there are a lot of people watching. I've got texts left and right asking questions about this. So people are listening and I appreciate all the, the commission members that are here. Thank you so much for sticking it out. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tai Tukui, also for being present this entire time. Director Borja, did you want to add something regarding Tangiisan?
Actually, not specifically about Tangiisan, but I, I wanted to thank Senator Tai Tukui for bringing that up because that's exactly the responsibility that the Environmental Committee has on the Title V, Chapter Two, Section Twenty-One oh five, is a review of these properties. And within that group there is EPA. And that's where the environmental concerns will be raised by the administration. EPA comes in, okay, let's take it, it's clean, okay, let's take it, we'll clean it up. Or no, don't take it, let them clean it up. And of course, they will be, you know, working with federal law to that. But yes, that environmental issue is in that process there of that Chapter Two, Section Five, Twenty-One oh five, which gives the Lieutenant Governor the authority to put together, under the leadership of BSP, and to involve EPA, land management, and the Office of the Attorney General in evaluating this return. By, by the way, Madam Speaker, there is one parcel that was left off your list. And I think if I may be allowed to present this one parcel, I think it's a very, very critical parcel that may answer Senator Tai Tukui's concern in this, in this process. That's parcel seven in, in AGA, and that's a really unique parcel in return back. It involves, it involves one lot that is being returned or transferred in two parcels. In other words, this company, this corporation originally owned this one lot, and that lot is being returned back or transferred back in actually three parcels. One parcel was transferred over to the, the ancestral lands commission. The basic lot I'm talking about is lot two thirty-eight at San Arida, but basically over there in AGA. And that parcel used to belong originally by the corporation. It was condemned by the corporation. And certain portions of that lot was returned back under different processes. A portion of that original lot was returned to GDA. GDA returned it to ancestral lands, and ancestral lands gave it back to the original owner, that corporation. Another portion of that basic lot was, was scheduled for return since nineteen seventy-seven under, yeah, under Public Law one oh three 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 nine. Upper Harbor Parcel Seven is identified in Public Law one oh three 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 nine as a seventy-three acre parcel south of Camp Covington. And I think this is in one of your references, Madam Chair, you quoted parcel seven, you know, Camp Covington. It's not exactly Camp Covington, but it's south of it. And in that, Public Law one oh three 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 nine, it did state that the exact acreage to be determined by surveys. So that's what we looked at, one oh three 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 nine, we're getting back seventy-three acres. Okay, fast forward to today, when the deed comes and the map comes, and it really wasn't a map, it was a sketch, we have to do extraordinary research to find out where that, what thirteen acres are. What happened? They said they're gonna return seventy-three, they're only returning sixty. The property is, well, the, the Section one oh six clearance by GSA in August of two thousand twenty says that the parcel is sixty point seven six acres. So land management's job was to evaluate that land return and find out where that thirteen acres are. Did we give it away? Anyway, the property is entirely, this parcel rather, is almost entirely wetland and will be subject to development restrictions. This parcel seven is the site of Namu River, which drains San Sarita and prevents flooding in that area directly across the street from Inon the Bay. Army Corps of Engineers has done substantial mitigation work in there to control Namu River and prevent flooding. Now, that's on the property, that's on the sixty acres. That's on the parcel that they will return for public benefit. What's the public benefit? Prevent flooding in that area, drains San Sarita, you know. So, so, so that's the parcel that's being returned. It's not nice, flat lands and, you know, build a store, rent it out to a Chinese mom and pop store or something like that. No, it's, it's, it's wetland and it has a drain in there. And where is that thirteen acre? It's the new Southern Wastewater Treatment Plan. That acre was transferred directly to GWAs to be able to utilize that land and be able to utilize federal funds that was given to GWAs to build that Southern Wastewater Treatment Plan. That waste treatment plan at Ugan is non-functional. It creates algae on that river next to Jeff's Park. Every once in a while, the river next to Jeff's. Every once in a while, the river next to Jeff's Pirate Cove, I forgot what the name of the river there, you know, would grow algae. It's an overflow from the Ugan Treatment Plant. So it's not sufficient anymore. So what the government did, Water Works did, is instead of Ugan processing the uh, sewage, they're piping that sewage that goes to Ugan all the way down to Aga. Now I bring up that very important parcel because we gave away the Northern Waste Water Treatment Plant. What do you mean we gave it away? Ancestral Lands Commission processed documents. And now there's a claim by a private company that they own the land with the Northern Waste Water Treatment Plant. We want to make sure reviewing and evaluating this returned land that this, uh, that the Southern Waste Water Treatment Plant, uh, doesn't have the danger of going to, uh, private landowner. So, you know, we, so we gotta be careful and, uh, I don't know why this was left out in the process and on it, but, uh, you know, and this property was condemned, it was condemned. It qualifies as condemned land, Civil Case Five Dash Forty-Nine. These records are all available at the, uh, at the Ancestral Lands Commission. So you know, the, uh, government, the governors faced in that, uh, decision. Uh, you know, on that. But the original owner of the basic lot had property returned to them through the ancestral lands commission, where I believe an active commercial lease is ongoing there now. But the other portions of that basic lot, Two Thirty-Eight, uh, is wetland, is contaminated. And, um, it does have a substantial, uh, facility there to help prevent flooding and drain, uh, Sanarita. As well as the southern, the new Southern Waste Water Treatment Plant. So, you know, this particular return, you gotta be real careful and evaluate this, uh, return, uh, a return or transfer for, uh, for public benefit, for the people of Guam. Most especially for the people from Zonia down to Aga and Sanarita who, uh, process the sewer that they generate. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I, uh, I would like to clarify that a little bit because, uh,
Your virtue is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Uh, on the position of the, uh, the commission and the Board of Commissioners, uh, the commission did not transfer the Northern Waste Water Treatment Plant to anyone. That's for the record. And for the record, uh, a deed was processed and maybe there were issues with the deed being processed, transferring the property up in that area. But for some reason, somehow, uh, after the deed was transferred, uh, titles were granted in the Department of Land Management uh, to the owners or to the persons who bought the property from the Torres Estate. And somehow titles were given to the Northern Waste Water Treatment Plant. But as far as the deed that we have, uh, it was clear that the, uh, conditions described in the, in the deed were, were included in the quitclaim deed. It was not a warranty deed. It was a quitclaim deed and stated that they must follow all of the conditions provided under, uh, Public Law One Oh Three Dash Three Three Nine and other, the other laws that apply to that. So no, the, it, the Northern Waste Water Treatment Plant was never transferred by, uh, deed, uh, by the commission. And somehow titles were granted after, uh, and I don't know how that occurred, but it was not with the Guam ancestral lands. I just want that clarified for the record. Uh, but there were issues, I admit, uh, back then. But it, but not dealing with the, the plant itself. Uh, that's, that's my take on that, Madam Speaker.
This is Masi, uh, Director Birch. And I know that that's, uh, that one, um, dispute is ongoing. And, um, yeah, I think, uh, all of us, yeah, we have to, um, see where that's gonna head with the lawyers. I think it's, it's, uh, the, it's interesting the AG's position on it, but we'll see. Okay, that, but unfortunately we can't dive into that right now just because of the length of this hearing already. It's eight twenty-two PM. I would like to offer, because they've been here this entire time, the ancestral lands commissioners, uh, a brief opportunity, if you could keep it brief, uh, to just, um, share your, send to, share your thoughts on this process, any suggestions or you know, whether, whether you think it's worth it, what we're trying to do here, um, find a way to make a list of the landowners that will be affected by potential returns, transfers in progress, potential transfers. It sounds like most of these, uh, the government of Guam has, uh, um, intended purpose for it. Easements, sewers on different purposes, hospitals and, um, and I just, it's, of course, you know how I feel. I feel like the landowners should at least know so that they can, uh, chime in as to these intended uses of the properties. And, um, and of course, you know, it's going to be on you. If the government of Guam keeps these properties for public use, uh, ancestral lands commission is going to have to manage its inventory, its land bank to, to come up with compensation again for, for these additional landowners. Uh, I know we've heard from the chair, Mr. Chair, did you have anything else to say or?
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, I'd just like to briefly add that, um, you know, for, uh, for the past, we've always encouraged and urged, um, and present and future leaders of Guam to maintain, uh, a, a commitment to the original landowners. We stand firm in supporting the original landowners of all federal properties. So in future properties that are to be released, we encourage all our leaders to have the original landowners as priority. I mean, they can negotiate with them, uh, you know, after the land is returned, we've maintained that, but within our limited powers and influence, that's what we've done and we maintain that today. So, so just Masi, uh, for this hearing, uh, Madam Speaker. And I turn it over to some of the other board members.
Thank you, Mr. Ekavay, and thank you to, uh, again, all the directors for their work, uh, in, in this, their, their extensive work. And of course, Mr. Leon Guerrero, all of you for all your work. We'll now go to the Vice Chair, uh, Mr. Leguano.
Okay, so just Masi, uh, Madam Chair. Yeah, and I think our chairman also left out a very important uh, part that we did initiate a resolution to that effect, that, um, the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission members' top priority is with the word ancestral. And with that, it comes deep to my heart that that we have to stop that mentality of these military lands. These are not military lands. And it's become a mentality. That is it, that are para now. And that's all how important this is to me and I'm sorry that I get emotional because we are affected. We are, all of us members here as heirs. And that, you know, we are not in the loop. We are not in that process. And, uh, it should come directly from our Congresswoman or Congressman because we've been hearing about these lists of lands to be returned. Better access lands and it just never comes to us. And we are not in that review process. And I think it's first legislation that we be a part of that review process so that we can uh, determine that, that, that we have a, uh, uh, have a word in it. Because you hear stories like the, the original landowners that, that just spoke. Not finity, you know? And you know, it's, it hurts because we are all affected uh, as, as commission members. And these properties are, are, are sacred lands. Ancestral and, uh, and, uh, I don't know, public benefit? You know, but, uh, I think it should go directly back to them if it was taken unjustly. And, uh, I, I feel for the original landowners. Because up to now, I've been a member of the commission, but still yet my family up in Tijan, that, that, the eighty families, the, the Tijan landowners. And I want to say this because people, I mean, I want to you, awesome speaker, but you're so grateful for the detailed historic narrative that you shared with us because many of that information does not come directly to us with the regards to the release of better access lands. And many of these people, the research they said have been done. But research has not thoroughly opened this up because many people got paid, yes. But many people also got their lands returned. And that's the injustice. Kumba justice. And they get elected, they will share something, they will eat, they need to, they man, man, I not that. That they might, that they may move to Parisia. It's again, so you know, with, let's do the noble thing. Be that patriot. This is only, this is the part to Ben, Pangilina, and education, passion, ocean, and man, not so, that's the man I agree. And it's our duty to carry that on. And continue the struggle of this to stop the mentality of this military land. Tano iman natibo, na iman samuru. And we need to fight for those lands. No matter what it takes and we need to open up our minds like our chairman said, you know? We have to keep it in our hearts together and work together and the powers that be. And has sugar, sunset. Land is sacred. And then, oh, don't clue, unless it was Masi, so, none, none, got, but they lack, no, she finity you. Such a coffee, they touch, but I'm not tall, tall. It's a, Madam Speaker, and I hats off to you in bringing up these matters.
This is Masi, Mr. Lepon.
Amen.
Uh, Commissioner Maria Cruz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our director is expressed in our mission and, and our, uh, missions, uh, challenges and meeting our goals and objectives. One of our passions is to complete the, uh, land bank trust eligibility process. Thank you again for this hearing.
Thank you, Mrs. Cruz, for your, your work on the commission. And that is a very important role and very difficult one, I, I admit. Um, now, is there, uh, Commissioner Arlino? Anita Arlino? Commissioner Arlino, if you could unmute if you would like to say a few words? Okay.
Okay. Got it? Yeah. Yes, and I will support that in every way. Good evening again. That land is sacred and it belongs to the original landowners. Please right the wrong, move forward. Because it was never the military's property. It belongs to the original landowners. And I will fight like Commissioner Leguano said. It belongs to them. Please return.
This is Masi, Commissioner Arlino. This is Masi. Commissioner Bloss, would you like to say a few words if you? You're welcome. Oh, is, is that a commissioner or staff? Kathy Bloss?
She's our special projects coordinator. Like I said, Kathy and Joey and I are one hundred percent, uh, staff present tonight.
Well, may, and I'm, I go there, I can see you now. Ms. Bloss, thank you very much. And, uh, thank you again, uh, Mr. Leon Guerrero. And thank you again, Director Birch. Thank you, Director Borja. And of course, the Ancestral Lands Commission. And of course, my colleague Senator Taitegui and the other senators that joined us earlier. And most especially, thank you to the ancestral landowners who have made themselves heard tonight and continue to do what's very difficult. And that is to remind everyone the real connection to these properties. The meaning of this to not just your families, but to the Chamor people, uh, to keep that connection to, to this land. And, um, it's a difficult time we're going through, many, many changes, you know, years have gone by, but, uh, uh, luckily, it's, it's ironic, but Congress has mandated a process where if a governor requests, the military must respond. And so we are now able to, to track these. We're able to track the documents, we're able to track the responses. And we're hopefully able to inform landowners better than we were able to do before. And I'm just hoping that the more they are informed, the more they will be able to participate and to influence the policy that the government of Guam decides. This is, these are policy issues, these are policy questions. Obviously, we've got existing laws. But if they're going to, you know, um, do other things and I, I, it's, it's my opinion that the more informed the people of Guam are, the better they will be able to participate in their government and influence that policy. And that's what I'm hoping for with these hearings. And I want to thank you again for all the hard work that you've put into this and that, uh, I realize there are many issues ancestral lands is facing that we have to continue to address. All of these work in a circle almost, you know? Um, and so, you know, that's not lost on me for sure. So again, um, I guess I'm just gonna leave it there, you know, we've got a policy that says lands returned should go to ancestral landowners unless they are under an existing public use. And if they are going to be kept by the government of Guam for an existing public use, then, then those landowners should be compensated. And I just want the landowners to be part of this discussion. So again, all the work that you can do to help us to inform them, I would very much appreciate that. And so this Masi, that for your time. And, and we will now adjourn this public hearing and it is eight thirty-five, eight thirty-four PM. So this must.
So this must.